Good morning. We have no Labor update. I see no one here to speak in the open forum, so we're going to adjourn into closed session. We shall return at 1:30. We do. Under order, this is San Jose City Council meeting for August 27th, 2013. We'll start with our invocation, and Vice Mayor Nguyen will introduce our invicator.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. I am happy to welcome Pastor George Mendoza from Sunrise Bible Church for today's invocation. Pastor Mendoza leads the multi-ethnic congregation at Sunrise Bible Church in District 7, and has a true passion for creating positive change for our community. Last year, Pastor Mendoza completed a year-long program for church planters with the Rebio Network in Atlanta, Georgia. He now assists the Rebio Network in the efforts to train community leaders to build churches in various cities throughout the nation. Please join me in welcoming Pastor George Mendoza. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Glad to be here. Will you bow your heads with me, please? Father, we thank you for your goodness and your grace over our lives. We thank you for our liberties and your provision and your common grace. We pray this afternoon for our civil leaders and our civil authorities who are giving their lives to serve the best interests of the people of San Jose. I ask that you would grant them wisdom in decision-making, that you would make what is just and good evident to them, that you would grant them courage to lead and the conviction to do what is right and best. With high position comes high responsibility. I ask that you would help them to look to the One who is higher than all for the grace and wisdom necessary for their task. Make them like the sons of Issachar, who knew the times and knew what should be done. With high responsibility comes high levels of stress. May they be protected from strife and tension that is sure to come. I pray that their homes would be a haven for them to be refreshed in, and may their families thrive as well as their careers. I pray that the fruit of what happens in this room would ripple out from here with the effect that the citizens of this city may live in peace and with dignity, that there would be a concern here for what happens in high-profile boardrooms, and also for what happens in our most downtrodden blocks. For our citizens, I pray that there would be love, that we would model what a just society looks like, that there would be harmony between ethnicities, that we would look at our neighbors as people created in the image of God with inherent dignity and worth. Father, you have made us, and you have made us for yourself, and you have given your Son Jesus to make prayers like this answerable, and I ask because of him that you would answer for your glory and for the good of this city. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with ever being just as one.
Our next item of business are the orders of the day. Are there any changes to the printed agenda? None? Is there a motion? We have a motion to approve orders of the day. On the motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed. As noted in the orders of the day, we will be adjourning this meeting in memory of Mary Ann West, who passed away on June 19th. Councilman McCondon has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you may have had the opportunity to have seen Mary Ann West in action. You may not have known her by name if you didn't live in District 1 or in the Lynnhaven Neighborhood Association, but I'm sure you would recognize her because of her involvement that she's had, deep involvement in District 1 and in our community. As the mayor mentioned, Mary Ann passed away this last June at 81 years of age. She was a teacher, a mother, a grandmother, a world traveler, and a very involved community activist. Her teaching career spanned 38 years and took her to a number of great places. She started in Nevada, went to Hawaii, Pismo Beach, actually taught in Japan, and her longest stint was actually with the Sunnyvale School District, not far from us here, where she was there from 1959 to 1992. She was very involved in District 1 community. She was a key player in helping us revive the Lynnhaven Neighborhood Association, and we have a number of folks from District 1 and the Lynnhaven Neighborhood Association here with us today, and also from the District 1 Leadership Group. She was also very active in the Red Hat Society in her retirement years, and I would venture to say that's why we have so many lovely red hats up there. Thank you for joining us today and remembering Mary Ann. She was a role model, a friend, and just overall, a really wonderful person. I'm fortunate that not only I can say that I had the opportunity to work with her in my role as a council member, but she really helped us in the neighborhood that I live in with my family, and that's the Lynnhaven Neighborhood. And her work has gone a long way to building community in the area that I call home, and I'm very glad we have the opportunity to speak briefly about her today, her life and her legacy, and her commitment to the city of San Jose and District 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCondon. Our next item is the closed session report. The city manager has the first item to report out.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm really pleased to announce that the city council this morning ratified my appointment of Kim Agiri as our next Director of Aviation at Mineta San Jose International Airport. Kim will succeed Bill Sherry when he retires at the end of September. Kim has been in the aviation industry for 28 years, including 18 years with the city of San Jose. She has served as Assistant Director of Aviation since 2008 and as Chief Operating Officer since 2011, when Bill took on those extra responsibilities at Team San Jose and essentially left Kim to run the day-to-day operations of the airport over the last two years or so. Prior to coming to San Jose, Kim also served in key operating roles at Teterboro Airport in New Jersey and at Burbank Airport in Southern California. She has her MBA specializing in aeronautics from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Florida. Kim has been actively involved in the fundamental changes in both the aviation industry and our own airport. These include the comprehensive modernization of the terminals that opened in 2010, significant expansion and improvements of the airfield over the past decade, the vast changes in operations and security since 9/11, and our continuing challenges to enhance customer service and airline services while strengthening the airport's competitiveness during very tough economic times. Throughout her career in San Jose, Kim has demonstrated strong leadership, firm technical knowledge, and tough, yet caring approaches to very complex problem-solving. This has been especially true over the past several years, as the city and the airport have both struggled to make painful decisions to reduce and realign staff and services in the face of reduced budgets. I am confident that Kim will do a great job to build on the strong foundation that Bill Sherry will leave behind after his very effective leadership for the past eight years. Together, Bill and his team have successfully transformed the experience for Silicon Valley travelers. And Bill, I'm very grateful for all that you have done for us, and I wish you and Lee all the best in your upcoming retirement. So in closing, let me say that it's always gratifying when our pick for our very important department head positions is identified right in our own backyard in San Jose, and Kim is one of those. She has a deep understanding of her team and the critical issues facing the airport, and she's committed to continuing our efforts for a successful future at SJC. Joining Kim today in the audience are her twin sons, Jason and Matthew Becker, her mother Peggy, and stepfather Tony Ivana, and her friend Mary DeMayo. I look forward to Kim taking the reins at our great airport and ask you to join me as she approaches to make a few comments in congratulating Kim Agiri on her promotion.
Honorable Mayor and council members, city managers, and the entire airport staff, who appears to be behind me. I'd ask who's running that airport, but I know the answer to that question. It's with great pride that I stand before you today, and thank you for this opportunity to become your next Director of Aviation. I'm honored for your confidence in me and your trust in my abilities to run that special airport. Through the past 18 years, there have been a lot of challenges, but I hope to face them head-on, work collaboratively with stakeholders, and relying on the expertise of a fantastic staff. Continuous communication, I'll ensure that we, the council, the city, and our community, share a common vision for the airport as we go forward. Along with the challenges, there have been a lot of wonderful and remarkable successes. We have that wonderful, modern facility that we're very proud of. We are continuing to grow our air service and our passenger numbers, and we're about to strengthen general aviation on the west side, and I can't speak enough about the employee group that's out there, very strong, very motivated, and very eager to succeed and make that airport a great place. I wish to acknowledge the mayor and the city council, the city manager, and the assistant city manager for your past and continued support. Bill, you're up there. You have been a great leader for this organization, and your support for me has been unwavering for the past years. Thank you. To the airport staff and all of our employees, we're embarking on yet another chapter, and I'm thankful for all that you do each and every day that you're out there. Being the director is a reality for me because you've been right there beside me all along, and I appreciate and thank you for that. And finally, to my family and friends, I know that some of my loved ones are watching, streaming right now. Thanks for your unwavering support and your confidence in me. Mary Ann, council members, and city manager, as Director of Aviation, I commit to doing my best to continue the success of our airport and ensuring that positive reputation that we've created continues strongly in the future. Thank you for this opportunity.
Anything else to report out of closed session, city attorney?
Nothing else.
We'll now turn to the ceremonial items. I'd like to start by inviting Councilman Liccardo to join me at the podium. Today, we're presenting a commendation to Lori Laird for the work and proven equality of life for the residents of the Washington neighborhood. Councilman Liccardo has the details.
Thank you, Mayor. We are offering commendation today to Lori Laird because Vice Mayor Nguyen and I benefit enormously, that is, our communities have benefited enormously, from Lori Laird's extraordinary work for the past 15 years now through Santa Clara University and all her work individually. As an individual, she has been personally directly involved in serving our community, most recently as the Chair of the Board of Sacred Heart Community Services, and she just recently stepped down. But really, her extraordinary work has been at the university through a couple of partnerships, one known as the Arupe Partnerships for Community-Based Learning, and another, which she holds the title of Associate Director, the Ignatian Center at Santa Clara University. And their work has been nothing less than extraordinary. 1,300 students have served in the Washington-Alma communities in more than 50 different community-based locations throughout those neighborhoods. And examples range from the Bronco Urban Garden over at Alma, assisting the senior center there at Alma, working with Catholic charities at Washington Youth Center, tutoring at Washington Elementary and at the Nativity School, assisting with immigration and job searches over at CET. The work of the students there has been incredible, and Lori Laird has led this initiative for the last 15 years, and perhaps most visibly in the last three or four, where it has really taken on unique prominence. The partnership that has emerged between Santa Clara University and the community and so many community-based organizations there is extraordinary, and now has even bridged that seemingly impossible divide between Santa Clara University and San Jose State, and I guess that's because Lori is a product of both universities. If I'm not mistaken, I think you got your master's at San Jose State and then your undergrad at SCU. So by really enabling us to recognize the extraordinary value of these partnerships and the great work that these students do in partnership with all these organizations, we are grateful to Lori for her leadership. Sadly, she's leaving us for a state to our north, to Oregon. She'll still continue to serve the community through JVC up there, but we wanted to send her off with a clear recognition of her great work here. Thank you, Lori.
Mayor Reed and Councilmember Liccardo, and Nguyen, I am so deeply honored to be recognized. This work that I have had the privilege of doing through Santa Clara University has allowed me to meet so many inspiring and committed people in the greater Washington and Alma communities who've taught me so much. It has been a joy and a privilege, and this recognition isn't about me, it's about collaborative work that has involved so many people, and work that I'm glad will continue through the university's Thriving Neighbors Initiative. I think that the connections that we have made with those communities are strong and will continue to flourish and grow. I'm sorry to be leaving the city that has been my home for the last 25 years, but I'll be coming back, and I'm excited to see how this work moves into the future. So again, thank you so much for this incredible honor. I'm very, very honored. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Jeff Rodeman, President of Wells Fargo in Santa Clara Valley, Alex Torres, Vice President, Community Development Officer, Wells Fargo of Santa Clara Valley, to join me at the podium, along with whoever else came from Wells Fargo. We'll get them all down here. We're doing this today because we want to thank Wells Fargo for years of service in our community. They've been a lender, a funder, a grantor to small businesses and community groups, as well as the city of San Jose, and we appreciate that. They've been especially active in sustaining, supporting sustainable building projects and renewable energy projects, providing $21 billion in environmental project financing over the country. We have four megawatts of solar projects in Santa Clara County alone, and of course, lots of funding for other clean tech organizations. So we appreciate that. We appreciate their active participation in so many community events, so we have a little commendation to thank them for that. It's back here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this recognition. On behalf of Wells Fargo in the Silicon Valley, we appreciate the support from the city and our partnership. This is just one of many examples of different things that we partner. I know at 2 o'clock today, we have a meeting around some things that we're doing with Kim and her group, and so we look forward to strengthening that partnership and continuing all of our philanthropic and volunteer efforts within the city. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Councilman Calwatt to join me at the podium as we present a commendation to NorCal Tennis Academy, recognition of their 10-year anniversary. I think some of them will come down and join us, and Councilman Calwatt will have some more to say.
Thank you, Mayor, and joining us is Thomas Lay, Calvin Pham, and Eugene Lay. Calvin and Eugene are coaches, and today we have the honor of presenting a commendation to Thomas Lay, the founder of the NorCal Tennis Academy. For the past 10 years, NorCal Tennis Academy has trained some of the most elite professional athletes in the Bay Area. The academy, which first made its home here in San Jose in 2003, has grown from just two clinics into a complete academy training program for young athletes of all levels and ages. And the first two clinics were actually in South San Jose, in District 2, at Rancho Santa Teresa Swim and Racquet Club and Santa Teresa High School. NorCal Tennis Academy has various programs ranging from high school and college preparatory programs to private lessons and group sessions. The biggest testament to the academy's success here in the Bay Area is the numerous state and nationally-ranked players who have trained at the academy, including more than two dozen athletes who have competed as top number-one high school singles players, many who have gone on to compete in prestigious U.S. Tennis Association tournaments. Someone who played on the tennis team in high school, I wish I had their training when I was playing tennis. NorCal Tennis Academy takes great pride in the quality of their programs, which are all taught by U.S. Professional Tennis Association-certified instructors, many of whom are former college players and college coaches. And in speaking to Thomas, I also know that they do a lot of benefit for the community, including training to low-income and needy youth to introduce them to the game of tennis. This year, the academy celebrates a very special milestone, their 10-year anniversary, and I know that Thomas will be speaking a little bit more about that. The city of San Jose would like to wish them continued success and thank them for their dedication to the sport of tennis. Now, on behalf of Mayor Chuck Reed and the rest of the city council, I'd like to welcome Thomas Lay, founder of NorCal Tennis Academy, and ask that the mayor present the commendation.
Thank you, council, for the commendations. It's been a great journey. We started in 2003 with just a handful of students, and now we have over 100. We started a new program at different locations, offering kits, and we have a wonderful team of coaches who are passionate about the sport, and this year's our 10th year anniversary. We're holding a formal event to celebrate and to thank the community, the parents, the students for their support, and we're looking forward for many, many more years to come in serving the great community of San Jose. Thank you so much.
Next item is the consent calendar. City Clerk, did you have something you needed to change?
Yeah, on 2.3A, there's just a minor change in the attendees of the Transportation Environment Committee report. Ed Chikata did not attend, Kim Wallace did. That's it.
Okay. Anything else on the consent calendar? I have no requests to speak on the consent calendar. Anything committee wants to pull, council wants to pull? We have a motion to approve the consent calendar noting the one change on item 2.3. On that motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed. Consent calendar is approved. Item 3.1, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind the council and the public that we have a study session scheduled for next Tuesday afternoon, September 3rd, the day after Labor Day. There will be no regular council meeting that day. The study session will be an opportunity for council to discuss potential revenue ballot measures to support the continuation and restoration of city services as anticipated in the council's fiscal reform plan that was approved two years ago. And as we all know, though we've made good progress after many difficult decisions and sacrifices to stabilize our budget situation, I think we all agree that city service levels are not where we or our community expect them. The council will start the discussion about if and when the council might ask San Jose voters to consider potential revenue measures such as a sales tax and the renewal of the library parcel tax, which is scheduled to expire in 2015, and next year will be the city's last practical opportunity to put an extension on the ballot. The study session is for discussion purposes, to get a sense of the council. We're not going to be looking for formal direction. The information, however, will be helpful as we continue whatever additional analysis will be necessary to further your policy decisions. Staff will issue informational material to help prepare you for this session during the latter part of this week, and that concludes my report.
Next item is 3.3. That's a fee schedule for city-generated zone towing for tow services agreements. We have some requests to speak on that. I'll take the public testimony at this time. Nikalangi.
Good afternoon. My name is Nikalangi. I'm speaking for Motor Body and Alangi Brothers. I just wanted to speak and to say that I support the agenda for the increase to towers. The CHP sets the rates that govern these fees, and they chose to leave rates pretty much unchanged last year, so this represents a two-year period for an increase for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any staff to add to this? I noticed we do have a replacement memorandum.
We just respectfully ask you to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation on the motion. All in favor, opposed, none opposed. Motion carries. Item 3.4 is next, amendments to the city pay plan to create and amend various classifications.
Mayor Alex Gersa has something to add to the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Alex Gersa, Deputy City Manager. We ask for the council's approval of this item. We just wanted to make one point of clarification. There are many classification changes. Some of the classifications have nine steps in the pay range, and we wanted to point those out. That will be moving to 10 steps in the pay range, and those are Senior Airport Operations Specialist 2, Senior Airport Operations Specialist 3, and then the Wastewater Operator 1, 2, and 3. The pay ranges that are listed in the council are all correct. It's just those five I've listed will now have 10 steps in the pay range. Thank you.
Councilman Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. I received some outreach on this issue in terms of new requirements around a college degree for some classifications or job positions. Was that issue raised to staff, or was that just raised to the council? It was an email I received from, I believe, a city employee raising the question about new requirements around certain classification requirement for college degree.
Yeah, these particular ones, I don't believe, require a college degree. However, these are now series where there's more experience and certification required as you move up. In terms of the outreach, both the airport department and environmental services did quite a bit of outreach with the employees in those departments, as well as we have communicated with the bargaining units that represent these employees about the changes. So it does provide promotional opportunities as you move up. These are both departments that are highly specialized, so... So again, their requirements are more focused on experience and certification in certain of the technical areas.
Okay. And a related question, but not germane to this particular action. How long has our HR position been open? Well, open vacant, so to speak, since?
I'm sorry.
Our HR director.
Oh, the HR director, that has been vacant for, I believe, it might be two years, approximately two years.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Is there a motion? We have a motion to approve the recommendations with the, as noted by Alex Gursa. With a change on that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Next item is 4.1, an agreement with the San Jose Downtown Association. We have a motion to approve. We have no request from the public to speak on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry. None opposed. Motion carries. Item 4.2, agreement with Work to Future Foundation to operate Work to Future's one-stop service site to provide direct client services. Councilmember Herrera.
Is there going to be a staff presentation?
We have staff here.
I'll speak after the staff.
Okay. Jeff Ruster and Kim Wallace.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Jeff Ruster, Office of Economic Development, and with me is Kim Walsh, the Director for the Office of Economic Development. And we are here to put forward a recommendation that the city of San Jose enter into a three-year agreement with the Work to Future Foundation. The sole source agreement would be in the amount of $1.7 million, and would provide the resources to the foundation to allow it to provide the critical training, workshops, job counseling, and job development services that the more than 5,000 clients we serve annually need. It's important to note that Work to Future was created in 2000. It's 100% general funded. No general funds go to support the Work to Future operations.
I'm sorry, it was 100% federal funded.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Workforce Investment Act funded. Right, okay. Sorry. Let's see. It's important to note that our unemployment rate is still at very high levels, at 7.9%. More than 40,000 San Jose residents are still unemployed. In addition, there are about another 10% to 15% that are underemployed. So our demands on our services remain very high, though one thing that has come down drastically in the last four or five years have been our federal funding, which has been reduced by more than 60%. So we are continually faced with the need to redesign our service delivery model and have done so over the last eight years on numerous occasions. This alternative service delivery model that we are bringing forward today is a significant effort in order to sustain the high level of service and performance that we've had in the past. Again, it's done with the sole focus of maintaining high service levels to provide more services to our clients, many of whom are San Jose residents. Through this whole process of designing the business case and the business model, we've engaged in extensive consultations with our Board of Directors, which include representatives from the private sector, from government, and representatives of labor, and they have approved this model in a variety of forms on numerous occasions. We've also consulted with the State of California Employment Development Department, which is responsible for monitoring and overseeing the federal funding and the performance of the Work to Future operations. And as noted in their correspondence, their written correspondence to us, they are supportive of the business model and the case for making and entering to the agreement with the Work to Future Foundation. And based on, and that's based on the rationale, the desire to have continuity of service, to avoid any disruption in service, and the track record of performance and compliance, high customer satisfaction levels, and just as importantly, the unique and strong relationship that exists between the city of San Jose, the Board, and the foundation. The way this has been scoped, it would be for an initial three-year period. The contract would be for three years. It would allow us to develop the baseline of information, of cost information, of performance, and then at that point, and as indicated in the letter from the Employment Development Department, it would be up to the Board and to the city to determine whether to continue with that model or to think about alternative service strategies at that time, including an RFP if that was the course to take. It should be noted that if this agreement for every reason were not to be approved tomorrow, we would have to engage in significant cuts in terms of our service delivery, in terms of layoffs of staffs and cuts to our training budgets and workshop budgets. And again, with the 5,000 clients, that would prove dramatic in terms of the importance of the service that we provide to them. Again, the business memo provides the business rationale for this unique service agreement with the Work to Future Foundation. It is important to note a couple things. There are three uncompensated officers that do currently work for the Work to Future Foundation. And in addition, as being a workforce agency, we are very cognizant of the impact of any layoffs to staff as we move through this. So it is anticipated that the 18 full-time staff that are impacted by this transition to the foundation would either have employment opportunities with the city of San Jose, though we do anticipate that many, and including also our temporary and classified staff, would have employment opportunities with the foundation, which itself is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. This action is critical to the organization's ability to sustain the high level of service, performance, and impact. And that concludes our presentation, and we're open for any questions you might have.
All right. Councilmember Herrera.
I'd like to move approval of this item.
You have a motion to approve?
And talk to the motion. There's not much else I can add. Jeff has really covered the subject very well. I think, I appreciate my colleagues, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Campos, for just signing on to a memo that just, again, reiterates the importance of the work that's being done by Work to Future and support for the foundation going forward in this model that's being proposed, because it's really the way to keep moving forward. And I just want to, again, highlight the fact that the 5,000 clients per year, most of those folks are in San Jose. So these are our residents that are getting serviced and getting help to find jobs and to get jobs that are better maybe than the ones they have, because not only do we have still unemployed people in the city, but we have underemployed, and we have folks that are still doing part-time work or two-part-time jobs to try to keep things going in their household. So we certainly have the need for it, and Work to Future is an incredible, provides an incredible service. I've been privileged to attend their annual get-togethers, where I get to meet the Board and a lot of the employers that come and talk about the successes, and actually see some of the clients of the work that's being done by Work to Future. And it's very, very impressive. So happy to support this, and the alternative is not an alternative. We can't, you know, this is the way to move forward, and I like the fact that we'll be able to analyze it over the next three years. We even have that built into it, too, to make sure that, to validate the way forward. So appreciate my colleagues' support on this.
I want to thank the staff, both Jeff and Kim and everybody else that worked on this. This is not the first time that we've had to respond to changes in federal funding and state funding. This is, I think, one of the most volatile policy areas in which we have to try to operate. And so, we've made many changes over the years since we, Work to Future first went into place. This is another one of those changes, and given the state of affairs of the federal government, there's likely to be more. So they've been creative, they've responded, and they continue to deliver services to the people who need it, and that's the key factor, because we have a lot of people unemployed and a lot of people underemployed, and this is one of the few things that we have that we can help them. So I want to thank the entire Board of Work to Future for working on this, coming up with this method and this approach. Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the kudos. I appreciate during a time when you've seen federal funding go from $16 million to $9 million, and you're still keeping the wheels on. It's pretty impressive, particularly given the great breadth of programs that you and your team have out there, Jeff. So thank you. My question was this. Going forward, recognizing, I think we've had some experience with sort of a fee-for-service model for companies that are interested in doing hiring. I know we've done in the past with some grant funding. But I'm wondering if we've ever engaged in sort of this straight-up, private-sector transaction where we tell a company, "You fund us so that we can train 50 people to work as supervisors in your plant, and you hire 10 of them, but at least we'll get 40 more people trained." Have we engaged in many of those kinds of relationships, and is that much of a promising option for us to fill the enormous hole that's left with the cuts in federal funding?
I think I can answer that in two ways. One, we do offer on-the-job training funds, so we can actually pay, and the employer pays 50%, so we share in a 50-50 cost-sharing arrangement if they hire a Work to Future client. It's one of our few financial incentives that we still have that we can offer companies. And so that's one way.
So we use federal money to backfill the other 50?
Yes, so it's a cost-sharing arrangement, but there has to be true learning and training going on during that on-the-job training period. So again, very interested in talking with employers to engage in that arrangement. But one of our two board initiatives deals with underemployed individuals, and the focus of that is really to develop a modularly designed, I won't go into too much detail, design, training program that we would actually go to employers with, which would allow them, and through the foundation, allow them to basically select the different kinds of trainings, because we work with over 70 different training organizations. So we can actually easily put together a customized package of training to meet their needs and act as a broker in that. And there would be a fee for service, and some of that training could be provided in classroom, and some of that training could be provided online. So we're working on developing that model as we speak.
Okay. And could you give me just a sense of the scale with regard to the, where you've got the employer and federal government match on, for paying employees who are going through training? What the scale of that is? How many employees in a typical year are really?
To date, it's been marginal, because there hasn't been that much hiring that goes on. And so what we're trying to do is expedite our ability to turn around that request by streamlining our contracts. But again, there is a process that we do need to go through that we're hoping to expedite through the proposed alternative service delivery arrangement.
And by forming this foundation, are we going to have more flexibility to do those kinds of things to enable us?
The foundation, yes, the foundation would, going forward.
Good. Great. Thank you very much.
Westmerwin.
Thank you. And thank you. I just wanted to echo the thanks and really commend staff for continuing to do really outstanding work. Obviously, this is very critical, because we are filling a gap that historically, people who live in certain areas in our city would not have the opportunity to be employed with some of the great companies that we have here in the Valley. I just had a real quick question, and this is really just picking back on what we just discussed about outreach to the various training organizations. We have a lot of great training organizations such as the Center for Employment Training, CTC, Center for Training and Careers. What kind of outreach, what kind of ongoing dialogue do we have with some of those organizations? Because I know that they also have a very unique clientele that are, they're training and also they're on the waiting list to be able to come to an organization like the Work to Future Foundation to have opportunities for additional training so that they can have viable job opportunities. So can you just kind of talk to us a little bit about the ongoing outreach and recruitment to these various organizations?
So both CET and the Center for Training and Career, CTC, are actually members of the Work to Future Board and are mandated partners under the Workforce Investment Act and have been there since the creation of the organization in 2000. So they are obviously quite aware of the services that we provide. They are also, and are now eligible to do so in terms of being on our eligible training provider list. So they're one of the 70 organizations that we can refer our clients to, where we can pay up to $7,000 in terms of training. And they do provide some of the workshops as well for our youth and for our adult clients.
Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Councilwoman Camus.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thanks for your out-of-the-box thinking. I think that we all need to look at ways that we can get more from our tax dollars, and I commend you again for your thought and your, this program that you're bringing to us today. Again, I wish you luck in this endeavor, and thanks again.
I have one request from the public to speak. We'll take that now. Joe Flynn.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this motion that you guys are looking at. I am the Chairman of the Work to Future Board. I've been on the board for a while now. I've seen these budgets been cut from the federal government, from the $16 million. In fact, this year, I think it was 11% budget cut alone. It has forced us to make radical changes in the way we deliver our service model. Jeff and his team have done a fantastic job over the years of accomplishing more with less, time and time again. I personally am a San Jose resident. I have four daughters. They all go to San Jose Public Schools. I am very concerned about the unemployment in San Jose. I volunteer my time to work with this group. Our Board is federally mandated, 43 members, public sector, private sector, labor, all over the map. This motion has got broad-based appeal and approval by the Board itself. I think it's very important for two major reasons. The first is, if we do not make this change, we will have to cut services. We will lose some continuity of services, and we cannot afford to have that as a community. The second is, if it does not go through, we are going to have to lay people off ourselves. So we're going to have those problems to deal with also. This solution is very innovative, like Councilmember Camus said. I appreciate that Jeff and Kim have come up with it and worked on it. I can tell you this, in closing, I am an entrepreneur. Not only do I write business plans and look at businesses, but I help mentor other entrepreneurs in other companies. The plan that they set forward, I have looked at, I've poured over, is a solid business plan. It makes a lot of sense. It has a lot of controls in place. It's very measured, and to the best of my ability, has general support from even the state as a business model. I thank you for your time, and I hope this measure passes. Thank you all.
That concludes the public testimony. I believe we have a motion to approve on the floor. We do. Any further questions from the council or comments on that motion? All in favor? Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. We'll now take up item 5.2, ordinance establishing neighborhood commission.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Roberto Duñez, Deputy City Manager, along with Ernest Guzmán, staff of the Neighborhoods Commission. As directed by council on June 18th, staff has drafted an ordinance that will establish a permanent Neighborhoods Commission. If you adopt the ordinance today, the second reading to the City Council will be on September 10th. The ordinance will go into effect 30 days later, on October 10th, and we anticipate having our first commission meeting on October 23rd. Ernest and I are here to answer any questions, but I do want to take the time to thank Ernest for his good work on this project, and also Patty Dagnan in the City Attorney's Office. Patty has been the legal advisor to us since the pilot began in 2007, and we want to thank her for her work.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank Ernest, the Attorney's Office, you, Roberto, also, the Commissioners, Judy Chirco, who was one of the folks originally who wanted to see this established, and all of those city staff that have been involved in this. I think it's really important that we establish this as a permanent commission. I think we've been moving along in that direction, and I just wanted to highlight, again, some of the things the Neighborhood Commission's already helped us with over the years. Feedback on our budget, really reaching out into the neighborhood and helping get neighborhood feedback on budget priorities. They helped on the tree policy. They had a subcommittee that worked on that and gave us feedback when we asked. They also gave us some input on neighborhood policing. They gave input that they wanted to see police officers spend longer periods of time in the neighborhoods, which has, again, come up on council a few times discussing that. Going forward, I think that we have focused them on some areas, including budget and public safety, and giving us feedback on important neighborhood issues citywide that obviously are not the purview of other commissions. So I think this will continue to be an important way for us to get feedback as council members on policy. on policy decisions that we have to make, and more, most importantly, to really hear that, hear feedback on issues that we might not, might not have come forward to us, because they have reach out, out into the community. So really appreciate my colleagues in supporting this. I appreciate Councilmember Campos supporting this and putting his name on a memo with me to support making the Neighborhoods Commission permanent, and look forward to us doing that today. Thank you. Move approval of this item.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation on the ordinance. We have one request to speak. We'll get to that in a minute. Councilwoman Cora?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Councilmembers Herrera and Campos for putting forth the memo. I felt strongly that this is a commission that has been effective. I know that it's needed some tweaking here and there, and that's part of the process when you're starting something new. But I think certainly in my feedback from the neighborhood themselves and the fact that they have ownership over this commission that I believe provides important feedback to City Hall, I think it's the right move to make this a permanent commission, and I think that the, the work done over the last few years has put it in a place where I think it could be successful going forward. Not to say there won't, there won't be a need for tweaks going into the future, but I think where we are now is pretty good with it, and I look forward to the commission continuing to provide valuable feedback for years to come.
We have one request to speak. I'll take that now. Richard McCoy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I want to speak in favor of this particular item. I know that the Neighborhood Commission has been temporarily operating for the last several years, and as a member of the Hathaway Park Neighborhood Association and the D1 Leadership Group, we found that their usefulness and input to us has been very valuable. And it's difficult for them to work in a temporary environment, and I think by making it permanent, the commission will be able to continue to provide all the neighborhood associations and the general public a lot of great information. I know Councilwoman Rose Herrera spoke about their budget input, and there's many other areas at which this commission has provided information to the public and acted as a conduit between the public, the neighborhood associations, the council, and the mayor. And I think their usefulness in the future will speak for itself, and I urge you to vote in favor of this measure. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilwoman Camus?
Yeah, I, I, I know the needs of, of the city, and I, and I understand the commission that we're trying to move forward here. However, you know, from, from what I gathered from my own past commissioners, they've wrote me letters asking me not to renew because they thought it was ineffective, and I don't know that that sentiment, you know, is, is true for everyone, but I have to realize what my own community's experience has been on, on the commission. The fact of the matter is, people can actually come to us directly and, and/or through other community organizations, and for example, we've had several community organizations in my area and other areas that I know all of you have your own leadership groups that you respond to. And I, and I think that, again, holding a, having a commission, just to have a commission, you know, may not be the right way. And again, I'll be voting against it based, based on the evidence that I gathered from my own constituents who served on the commission.
Councilwoman Chu?
Thank you, Mayor. I voted against it the first time we came to the, the council, because I felt that this has been really a struggling commission. We established in 2007, has a pilot for about two years, and then, and it's been under the pilot for the next, for the last six years, so I felt I was really struggling. And I did have some feedback from my own commissioner, just like Councilmember Camus who just commented. But I'm, I'm willing to give it another try, you know, to see, see if we can, well, I, again, I don't, the reason it's been struggling, I don't think it was any fault of the commissioners. And, you know, definitely willing to, we're really, really happy to have so many private citizens that are willing to serve on the commissions and volunteer their time to, to better the, our, our, our city. I felt that a lot of time, they're not given enough information to really make the decision. You know, we can easily say they advise us on the budget, all right? And, and I don't know if we can even ask the commissioner to, to, to come, or at least stay home and watch all the, the, the budget study sessions to really make a very informed and valuable suggestion to us, you know, just to, for the city manager to give them a 30-minute presentation of, of, of community budget meetings, those presentations, and then, and then ask them to make the, the recommendation for a budget. It's just not fair for the commissioner. But I'm, I'm willing to give them another chance. I'm, I'm just hoping that they can get more involved in, in, in the process, specifically on the budget. I mean, I'm hoping that they will show up in our, all of our budget hearings, and so that they can give us a better educated answer.
Councilwoman Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilmember Chu, I think that's great feedback, because I, I do agree that some of the commissioners and my Neighborhood Association leaders for that matter do share some frustration that during the budget set, the budget hearings, that there's constraints on, okay, well, you want to give us, give us input on the budget, but here are your silos or your parameters. And, and they've expressed that to me. So I, I agree that there should be, you know, open dialogue, there shouldn't be, you know, parameters, because then you could, you know, we could be ignoring, which actually we, we would be ignoring and have ignored some very creative people that, that come to those sessions. But I wanted to, to, you know, reserve my comments on the commission itself. I think the fact that it went from three commissioners down to two commissioners per district, per district is, is a testament to, you know, the trial and error part. You know, I think that you've got folks, and I could speak for my district, that are committed. They show up to the meetings, they give good feedback, they go back to the avenues in the district, in my district, and, and that case being the NACs or the D5 United, and give feedback from, and take feedback, vice versa, that, you know, that'll, that'll go both ways to help the neighborhood groups. I know my neighborhoods have gotten very engaged. You know, when I got elected to office, I had 18 neighborhood associations. I think we're up to 22 now, and that's the whole point, is that we should be getting folks in our neighborhoods excited about being involved and having their voices heard, especially now that, you know, the economy's getting better and, you know, we're hopefully being able to start investing back into our neighborhoods, you know, and, and grow libraries, community centers, and so forth. So, you know, I, I think we got some folks that are, that are willing to give their time and give us their suggestions, and I think it's our job to really listen to them and not just, you know, take their advice and not really use it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank staff for their work on this, and also the commissioners for staying through this process. It's been a long time coming, and they've invested a lot of time. And as a liaison, I'm looking forward to the work outcome, so to speak, on this new scope. I think it's going to be very effective. Thank you.
Councilwoman Chu?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have another question. When we do the caucus election, will we be able to reach out to those neighborhood groups that only have a cyber meeting instead of a physical meeting? They have a Yahoo group that they communicate to each other on a regular basis? Are they, would they be considered as one of the neighborhood group, or only the group that meet, physically meet regularly is considered?
Councilmember Ernest Guzmán, city manager's office. That's an interesting point that you bring up, and it's, it's something that we've been exploring even through the cap grant process this last year, where we had a, a whole series of, of, of neighborhood groups that were put together by Nextdoor. And the way they met and started meeting was, was in virtual reality, virtual space. So we actually ended up giving grants to at least two of these groups. So we consider that whatever medium they use to be able to gather, it's a legitimate medium. So my answer to you is that, certainly my recommendation to the commission, once we get together and set up the, the guidelines for the caucuses in 2014, is to approach it from that, that, that avenue, that a group can be not just a, a, a group that meets in a building, but rather that develops community in cyberspace.
Great. Thank you very much.
City Attorney?
And I don't know if this adds to the conversation, but the, just for the record, the term neighborhood groups is defined in the ordinance, and it, it means those groups that meet the definition of neighborhood groups as set forth in Planning Outreach Policy 6-30. So to the extent that those are the neighborhood groups in that, in that outreach policy, those are the folks that are involved in the process, under, under the ordinance.
So it can include lots of groups?
Yeah.
It's council policy. If we needed to change the policy, we could certainly tweak the policy.
Mr. Mayor, one of the, the tenants of that policy under 630 is that the, the group be composed of a, of a mission to, to really work in their own individual neighborhoods. So I think that there could be an interpretation that as long as these groups are meeting for the sole purpose of making their neighborhoods better, it more than likely would, would meet that definition, but we certainly will check with our city attorney about that.
We have a motion to approve on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? Count one, two opposed. Oliverio and Camus opposed. Motion carries. Matter is approved, taking us to item 6.1, actions related to the shuttle bus service at the airport. We have a motion to approve the recommendations on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Item 7.1, agreement with Telstar for temporary staffing at San Jose Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility.
Carrie has a comment for the record, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you. Carrie Ramon, now Director of Environmental Services. This morning, we realized there's an error in the cost summary and implication section of this memo. It's still within the, within the outline of the agreement, but we failed to notice the annual compensation adjustment. So we cite, where we cite 115 an hour, it's actually 2.6 percent more than that. It doesn't affect the amount that we're asking for, but I did want to note that correction.
We have a motion to approve the recommendations as noted with the change. Councilwoman Chu?
Thank you. I got a quick question. Will this be coming back to us on an annual basis for the approval of 1.67 million contract? Or the approval will, is good until 2017? So this is three, four-year commitment or just one year?
One year. So we, last year when it was approved, we said we would come back every year and ask for it to be approved on an annual basis.
Okay. What's the perspective of getting some full-time permanent city employee to take over those critical jobs? Are we looking better, or?
I'm optimistic. I think we're moving in the right direction. We're also hosting a career fair at the Rotenda tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:00. It's open to the public. We've done quite a bit of outreach on that topic. We'll also have another job fair in the November timeframe, where our actual staff will be out there talking with prospective candidates about jobs that are posted, as well as jobs we expect to be posted, and talking to them about how they can build their career in wastewater.
Right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, Councilmember Chu had similar question that I was thinking, and the direction, as I recall it and it listed here, was to return with the status report, so to speak, and the memo, it has the background and the analysis, but I guess status report, to me, would be a little bit more in terms of some of the questions that Councilmember Chu, just a little to you, about going forward. Are we moving in a direction of hiring the individuals, or are we just moving along with the status quo of maintaining, utilizing these folks, and we're getting comfortable, and we're really not making large efforts? I mean, that's just me saying out loud what's happening, and trying to read between the lines here, what's actually happened in your side of things. That's my question.
Okay. We have been providing quarterly staffing reports to the Transportation and Environment Committee, and that's really outlining where we are and the actions that we're, we've taken during that period, as well as what we see on the horizon. The career fair I just mentioned was something that came out of our very first meeting with staff, where we have our management staff meeting, where we talk about when we will or will not need to bring in temporary staffing. And our staff had a great idea to have a career fair, and we fully supported that, and that was only three weeks ago, so we're, we fast-tracked that as quickly as we could.
And I have two more questions. One is the, the reference to the industrial electricians in our side letter agreement with IBW. Can you expand a little bit more on that? And I'm trying to, again, forgive me for not understanding this, but are you suggesting that we're not going to use that any longer? We're going to go with Telstar, or we're going to continue that side letter with IBW?
We're continuing both.
Okay.
So IBW is our preference, but then we have a backup plan.
We were moving away from the, the IBW?
No.
Okay. And then the mention about the work with HR, and you talked about the job fair, and it also mentions here, a job, posting a job announcement for industrial electrician supervisor in August. And was there some timing issue of waiting to do that, or was that, is this one position that we're posting?
It's one position.
Okay. And the, the significance of that one position that we're posting and why it's mentioned in the memo? Forgive me for not understanding why that's significant.
We're really excited about it.
The one position?
No, we, the industrial electricians, because it's a new job class, there were some testing components we had to frame up, but then we also would like a new supervisor to have a voice in their staff, so it's a, it's a timing issue and probably didn't need to be highlighted.
Oh, no. Thank you for, for sharing it. I just want to understand the significance of it beyond just us and one new, more job that we're trying to fill. So thank you for your time.
City Manager?
Carrie, don't go away. Just to clarify, Councilmember Chu, the recommendation is to authorize the, the first option, and then the city manager in this, if you adopt this recommendation, is authorized to exercise the options. You know, there's one option each of three years, correct, Carrie? That's what this would say here, Rick just pointed that out to me. So I think what we would do is, if we felt they were performing, to exercise the option, and certainly we could advise council through info memo, if that's the pleasure of the council.
The, I think the way it works is that it authorizes the city manager to sign the options subject to appropriation. So if the council makes the appropriation as part of the budget, the city manager has the authority to sign the options without having to come back to council to, to get approval to exercise the option. So just wanted to clarify that.
All right.
And our intent would be, though, to message that, whether it's an info memo or, or other less formal process, our, our intent would be to share that with you.
In any event, council has to appropriate the funding at some point or the other in this process. Councilwoman Cora?
Thank you, Mayor. And Carrie, this is the, the operation or the execution of extension that's for Telstar and is essentially based upon the fact that we just, we need, we, these are essential resources we need in order to operate the plant. We don't have enough city staff to be able to, or the, we have not been able to hire enough to keep up with capacity.
Yes.
And the, as indicated on page two, we're actually paying, paying the temporary employees 15.4 percent more than our own city staff to do the work.
Yes.
And from my recollection, the actual pay that goes to the employees is actually less than what our employees make per hour.
Yes.
And so the, the markup is essentially profit to this private company that we're paying, essentially because we don't have much of a choice, because we need to keep the operations going, but that's, that's where the markup is. It's not an increased benefits or pay or vacation, it's to profit to the company.
Well, when we, we don't know the total compensation of each individual temporary staff that we get.
Sure.
get, but certainly I would expect a private firm to be making some profit, and then they also do the recruiting for us.
And, but that was my recollection, the first time around, was obviously the first time we did it, there was more detail involved, and so I think it was broken down a little more. And there was, my recollection was a really high percentage of the markup was due to profit and, you know, that's, I just imagine it's probably similar, this is an extension, so I imagine it's the same contract and the same terms, as far as that's concerned. And I also noticed in looking at the extension agreement that there is a percentage change in compensation based upon CPI of 2.6%.
Yes.
So, we're increased, is that an increase as we're extending the term, we're actually increasing pay based upon the increase in the cost of living?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and so, thank you. I know that you have to do what you have to do to make sure that operations occur, and, you know, I reluctantly will support this because we have to make sure that the facility, the operations of the facility continue. But this is an example of what's happened, is we've driven so many of our employees away and can't attract qualified employees, that we're instead giving more money to a private firm in order to just keep ourselves afloat, and I think that's, not to make, no pun intended, but to keep ourselves afloat at the facility, and I think that's unfortunate, but I'll support it because we have to support it. But it was a long, a line of decisions by this council that has caused us to be in this position.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to the city attorney for clarifying and city manager. The way I read it is like we're approving for, you know, a four-year agreement with annual compensation, not to exceed $1.67 million. So, I will, I know this is probably one of the 40, 50 contract agreements that the water pollution plant has. I don't know if I would like to make a friendly amendment to have this item coming back to us on an annual basis, or some alternative of reviewing all those contracts on an annual basis. I'm just speaking kind of out loud. So, I guess I'd like to hear my colleague on the council here, do you want this one to come back to us on an annual basis, knowing that this $1.67 million is one of many, many contracting projects that the water pollution, water pollution plant was utilized? So, the total contracting out amount for the facility is probably with, probably two to the 10 millions a year?
I don't know offhand. We do use a lot of outside services.
Oh, I'm just throwing that out. I don't really have a strong opinion to demand that we come back every year, except, because, Carrie, you already mentioned there would be some information memos, and then we'll have to appropriate for the funding anyway, so.
Well, there are quarterly reports that come through the committee process, and then we have to, we'll have to do appropriations. So, I think we'll have all the information when we do the appropriations to decide whether or not to appropriate the money for it, because if there's no money, then it really doesn't matter. Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a clarification provided by the city attorney that may be a little less clear on this. My impression when we approved this was that they were going to return, the administration was going to return each year that we were going to renew this, not one year, and this now clears the other three-year.
The authorization request before you is to approve the city manager to sign the extension, the agreement, and to sign, exercise an option for each of the next three years, assuming council appropriates the funds for that purpose. So, the council will get the information as part of the appropriations process, but not the agreement itself.
But I'm, yeah, I understand that, but the original direction that brought us to this update wasn't that direction.
I don't know that. All I know is what's before you today, and that is to, and that's up to the council. Do you want to delegate to the city manager the authority to exercise the option subject to appropriation, or do you want to have the staff come back every year to get that authority to exercise the option?
Okay. Well, I think I was the one that requested this returned to council at the time, and I'm more comfortable having it returned to council annually for that extension to meet a significant amount of dollars, and I am very interested in this update and a full council. I recognize you mentioned the TNE, but I think this is an important issue for all of my colleagues, not just the TNE committee.
Vice Mayor Win.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine either way. I mean, obviously, if we approve this as it is today, and next year if we run out of money or for whatever reasons we can't pay, then obviously we have to come back and have a discussion. We can't just go and pay somebody when we don't have the money. But if, you know, if coming back here on a yearly basis is going to give, you know, some of my colleagues more comfortable, then we can certainly do that. I feel very confident that, you know, we will have the money, because obviously the wastewater facility is so critical. We don't want any, you know, odors or bad waters running throughout the city of San Jose. Through the appropriation process, you know, we have an opportunity also to appropriate the money. So, at this point, because I made the motion, I'd like to hear maybe perhaps from the mayor and some of my colleagues, whichever way is, you know, it's the most feasible way to go.
I think if it helps Councilmember Rocha and Chu and the others be comfortable with the process, we can do it a year, probably maybe combine them. So, when we do the appropriations, we'll decide then whether or not to authorize the signing without bringing it back. And I think that's when you could make that decision, when we're the other. So, for purposes of the motion, it would be to bring it back annually, and if we decided we didn't need to have it come back, then we would decide that at the time we do the appropriations. So, I would, I think, support the friendly amendment. And I don't know who had the second, okay with the second, or, okay. So, we have a friendly amendment on the bringing it back portion. Anything else? We have a motion with the friendly amendment on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Next item is 7.2, actions related to the phase out of expanded polystyrene foam foodware. Councilmember Licardo.
If there's a staff presentation, I'd be happy to wait until staff has an opportunity to make the presentation.
All right. We do have staff here, and I have some requests from the public to speak. We'll get to that in a minute. We'll start with the staff presentation.
I don't think I have the capability. Oh, all right, thanks. Carrie Romano, Director of Environmental Services. Today, we are recommending that we adopt a resolution adopting the negative declaration, analyzing the regional environmental impacts of a phase-out of extended polystyrene foodware, and approving ordinance to phase out the use of expanded polystyrene foodware with the first phase implementation effective January 1st, 2014. See, now I'm getting ahead of myself. In February, on February 26th of 2013, council directed us to do three things. I'd like to just review what we've, how we followed through on those recommendations, and then talk about the ordinance before you today. You asked us to continue to work with the community key stakeholders and other interested parties on litter reduction efforts and educational strategies to meet the city's litter reduction objectives, and then to report back semi-annually to TNE. Over the last two years, staff has conducted very extensive outreach. We've visited approximately 1,200 local restaurants throughout San Jose. We've surveyed 500 restaurants. We've had seven stakeholder meetings and two vendor liaison sessions. We've had meetings with restaurant and business associations, including the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the San Jose Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce, Story Road Business Association, Downtown Business Association, Japan Town Business Association, California Restaurant Association, Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce, Small Business Commission, San Jose Downtown Association, and Winchester Business Association. Since February, we've done knock and talks with over 300 local businesses, and we've sent out 3,000 wrecked mail pieces. We've also continued to have conversations and understand more about what our community needs are. The second request was that, or direction, was to inquire with the city's current commercial and residential waste collectors and industry on the viability of reducing all forms of EPS materials now ending up in San Jose landfills, including a full discussion of recycling these materials. Since February, we've revisited and consulted with our current recycling contractors, who confirmed the reasons they cannot recycle EPS is that it's frequently too contaminated with food waste to recycle. It breaks apart into small pieces in the collection truck, making it difficult to sort and separate at the recycling facility. EPS does not have sufficient sales value in the commodities market, and even if the EPS is clean when placed at curbside, it's contaminated as it is collected and compacted in our recycling trucks. We also reached out to Southern California cities. And while many cities in the Southern California and other regions of our state accept EPS in their recycling programs, like San Jose, they experience the same recycling issues. The cities we spoke to manage the residential solid waste in the city of Riverside, Los Angeles, and Redondo Beach. We also spoke with vendors that do the multifamily collections in the city of Los Angeles, and they are experiencing those same challenges. So, while they do collect it, it does not wind up being recycled. The third direction was to schedule a public hearing in summer 2013 to approve and adopt an ordinance to phase out EPS foam foodware, beginning in 2014 for large businesses and 2015 for small businesses. And that's the ordinance before you today. You also directed us to complete a county-wide sequel process to enable neighboring jurisdictions to use an environmental clearance conducted by the city of San Jose. We led that process with countywide partners, including Sunnyvale, Cupertino, Mountainview, Morgan Hill, Los Altos, and Campbell, and that led to the drafting of a negative declaration that you are now considering. Several of those cities have told us they are simply waiting for San Jose to adopt this ordinance, and they will adopt it in their own jurisdictions. Additionally, the County Department of Environmental Health staff have agreed to add EPS to their restaurant inspection checklist upon completion of their automation process in The phase-out that we are proposing today would phase out EPS at San Jose restaurants, again, not specify an alternate product, so you don't need to replace like-for-like. And it gives, that gives, we believe, the restaurants more flexibility in our conversations with restaurants. They, in general, liked the flexibility and did not want to be directed with what the replacement product needed to be. Implementation would begin with national chain restaurants, starting in January 2014. National chain restaurants represent about 400 of San Jose's approximately 2,000 restaurants. These larger chain restaurants may have already adapted in other jurisdictions outside of San Jose that have banned EPS. The phased approach would delay implementation for the remaining restaurants a year later to January 2015. This gives those smaller businesses time to adjust their operations and make change. We also are hoping that regional costs will continue to decrease as the market for the materials grows. It also gives us a little bit more time to do more outreach, to the extent that that's needed. Lastly, it allows for financial exemption and a unique packaging exemption. We're proposing exemptions for financial hardships for restaurants with a gross income less than $300,000 a year. That affects as many as 321 restaurants. We've also added a unique packaging exemption for restaurants with unusual packaging needs for which there is no suitable alternative. They can continue to use EPS. The application is a single-page document requiring minimal amount of information to verify eligibility. If council adopts the ordinance, we will continue to provide ongoing outreach to businesses with the objectives stated. We'll ensure they understand the ordinance elements, have access to a list of alternatives and pricing information, and know where to ask for assistance. So, we will continue the hotline, and we'll continue our outreach efforts and support for those businesses. So, that concludes our presentation, and we are hopeful that you will support joining 70 California cities that have banned EPS foodware, including San Francisco, Oakland, and Fremont. With that, we're available for questions.
I'm sure we'll have a few questions along the way. I do have some requests from the public to speak. We'll take that in a few minutes. Councilmember Licardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank many people who've worked so hard on getting us to this point on our own team. I really want to thank many members of Carrie's department, Paul Ledesma, Lane Marshall, Nap Fukuda, Elisa Mansky, Carolina Camarena, forgive me if I've mispronounced her name, Paul Prera in our office, who's worked very hard, and several advocates from Save the Bay and Save Our Shores. Allison Chan has been spending more time in City Hall than I'm sure she, Wish Loa Casa, of course, from Save Our Shores, also from Save Our Shores, Rachel Kippen, who is a program manager over there, and also doubles as a polystyrene monster in her free time, and Elisa Trigueros from Save the Bay, who I thought wrote an excellent blog summarizing some of the city's work and following up some of the allegations from members of the industry that were simply not accurate. And I really appreciate the ability to correct the record about what is happening and is not happening with regard to recycling of this substance. I'd like to make a motion, and I appreciate the insights from my colleagues, councilmembers Cora and Campos, and I'd like to suggest a motion that incorporates those suggestions in the following way. I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation with the following amendments. First, incorporate paragraph two of Councilmember Campos's memorandum dated August 26th relating to educational outreach plan. And then, with regard to both the recommendation of Councilmember Macora and Councilmember Campos in his first paragraph, I'd ask that staff return to council in two years, and in two years' time, evaluate whether we should simply sunset the hardship exemption, or if it appears we've got unique challenges here, whether in fact we should exercise an amnesty. So, that would be the motion.
Second?
Thank you for the second.
Thank you. You have a motion on the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could just briefly explain why I suggested that, as I did. I think given the date that Councilmember Cora suggests is 2017, we will have time to be able to consider between now and then whether simply to get rid of the exemption, if it's either not being utilized or not necessary. And I think we anticipate it probably won't be necessary, because staff has done an extraordinary amount of research, finding many alternatives that are equal or lower price. And with regard to the amnesty suggestion from Councilmember Campos, I think typically we have engaged in amnesty programs after the fact, certainly, and I think it would be good for us, given the fact we already have a phase-in and we have a hardship exemption to allow those to work. No small restaurants will be subject to this for a year anyway. And if we find there's a real challenge with noncompliance, then to go ahead and implement an amnesty if that should become the issue. But I think our experience in other cities has been pretty widespread that this is not a difficult ordinance to comply with, and that businesses have been able to do it, and they've been complying. And I just wanted to quickly summarize the basic thrust of why we're choosing polystyrene among the many pollutants that are out there on our world. I think the evidence shows that this is a uniquely potent pollutant to our marine wildlife. We know this is a uniquely durable pollutant as well, that, in other words, it doesn't biodegrade, and well after we're gone, and well after our children have left the earth, we will have polystyrene still left on the earth and in our seabeds and our creeks, because it will continue as long as the earth is here, perhaps even longer than the Kardashians are around on television. And finally, this is one of those pollutants where there are options, there are affordable options, and we have seen business after business, and some of them are mentioned in the memorandum co-authored by the mayor and myself, where they have actually found alternatives that save them money. And we know that's true, both from the pricing that we've looked at, as well as from the experience of businesses that are out there. So, for those reasons, I support the staff's work. Thank you.
Councilmember Cora.
Thank you, Mayor, and I wanted to thank so many members of the community that, and advocates that have been very supportive of this measure. As Councilmember Licardo indicated, this is something that's been done in many, and as staff indicated, in many various cities and cities around the state and nation, and frankly- As Councilmember Liccardo indicated, this is something that's been done in many, and as staff indicated, in many various cities and cities around the state and nation. And frankly, we're a little bit behind in that regard, but the size of our city offers unique challenges. And so I think that we're certainly moving in the right direction, and hopefully our move will, as indicated by Kerry, will help to encourage other cities in our county to follow, just as they did with the plastic bag ban, and which I believe has been a very successful program. And Kerry, I was wondering if you can speak to the suggestion in my memo, and I appreciate Councilmember Liccardo for addressing it, in terms of the, kind of, the arc we're on of alternative product pricing and today, where we may have been even a couple of years ago, and where we might be in a couple of years. And in, just in terms of kind of the competitiveness of alternative packaging, and, yeah, let me first get your answer to that question, and then make a comment.
Over the last two years, we've seen prices drop significantly. So over 50%, we've seen prices decrease as more restaurants and others are using non-EPS products. And we would expect that to continue. So we would expect over the next several years that there not really be a differentiation in price from EPS to those replacement products.
And in terms of the suggested, the sunset provision I placed for, I suggested for hardship exemptions of 2017, is that something that you would be supportive of in general? I mean, I'm not saying I'm putting that out there as a motion right now, but in terms of the capacity for there to be competitive alternatives? And the reason why I put it forward to begin with is that I think that the timeline we have in place, particularly the one-year exemption for the smaller businesses, and the fact that the gross revenue of $300,000 is somewhat generous in terms of allowing the opportunity for some small businesses to get up to speed, that I think that's an appropriate amount of time to allow for restaurants to come up with an alternative or make a claim that there's no alternative that's feasible. But at some point, we just have to stop allowing this item into our waste stream. And so that's why not having a sunset provision in there or discussion of it, to me, wasn't going, wasn't going far enough in terms of putting forward expectations. And so that's why I kind of had this vague question posed to you.
And certainly, we, our hope is that by 2017, every restaurant in San Jose will be using non-EPS products. And our intent is to continue to educate and work with them, and where there's administrative levers that help that, you know, that's supportive as well. But we do believe that the price, the pricing will get us to the point where the financial hardship won't really be needed anyway, because the replacements will be the same price. So it can be an official phase-out, or it will just naturally phase-out. The advantage to having an official end date is it's a little bit less administrative requirements.
And then that was part of the reason I put it forward, as mentioned in my memo, is the administrative cost of having restaurants have to annually, you know, file for the exemption. And obviously, I don't anticipate we're going to have a big enforcement team on this, but there may be an occasion where that may come up through, the county may, their regulators may notice something and require us to do some enforcement. Part of the idea of expectation also is allowing the restaurants, particularly the smaller restaurants, the non-national chain restaurants, to have, to pace, to pace themselves to get to a point where they phase it out. If there's, if there's not a sunset, then they don't, they don't start doing that. They don't start preparing to phase it out. Instead, we come back in two years, and then we see where we are, and then at that time, they're obviously, you know, going to come at that time and say, "Well, don't enforce this," or delay it. By having a hard deadline, in some sense, allows everyone to build it in to their business costs, allows the consumers to understand when these will be phased out, allows the residents to understand it. And so that's part of the reasoning to have a hard sunset now, as opposed to coming back in two years, then having a fight over how much everything costs, like we've had over the last couple of years. You know, it's a, you know, a battle of experts as to how much things cost or will cost, inevitably, or not necessarily inevitably, but at least encourages further delay at that point. And so that, you know, that's part of the reason why I feel it's important for us to have a sunset provision in right away, or at least the fact that we have the anticipation of a sunset without a hard date, but a discussion when we come back in two years, so that at least it's known to the community, to the small restaurants, that there is going to be a sunset at some point, even if it's not the date that I proposed. Secondly, for new restaurants, what, if anything, and another reason why it's good to have a sunset is that new restaurants, as they open, already build into their business plan the idea that they're going to offer alternative packaging. But currently, what's the plan for new restaurants that open up during the interim period of the next couple of years?
Well, that's, that's an interesting perspective for us. Those firms won't have had $300,000 in sales the previous year, so they would be eligible for the financial hardship. But our intent would be to spend time with them, working through how they might package their product differently from their, from their opening timeline.
Yeah, and so that's, that's good. I hope that before they open their doors, that there's, that they're aware of the policy, if the council so adopts it today, and they're given every opportunity to use alternatives from the get-go. And I mean, frankly, if there's any business that, new business, after one year, they're already getting $300,000 plus in gross receipts, then they're, they're doing pretty well. But regardless what the number is, because every business, we don't know what the business model is, we don't know what their business costs are, it'd be good to be in a place where we can at least get them from day one to not have that as part of their business practices, because then it's going to be a cost to them at some point when they update, if there's an assumption that there's going to be more cost for the alternative packaging. So, you know, I would really like to see a sunset at this time, be put in place a hard date, so that I think that at least gives a reasonable expectation to all businesses. Councilmember Liccardo, I don't know that, in how you would like to see this update phrased, but if it can be in such a manner that, that there's at least a clear message that there's an intention of having a sunset, even if we don't know the exact date at this time.
I would be happy to modify the motion to direct that staff come back with a recommendation to eliminate the sunset in two years. By that time, I think we will have had enough information to be able to make a good decision about the sunset.
And so essentially, that'll be probably, I guess that'll be about six months after the small businesses or the non-national chains will have that been asked to comply, because they're January 1st, 2015, for the, for the non-chain restaurants. So, you know, six months after, so sometime mid-year 2015, then?
That's correct, if that's okay with the secretary.
Yes.
All right, so we have a, I want you in a slightly modified motion.
Yeah, so that's, that's fine, I appreciate that. So if we're not going to have a hard date, I can understand why people may be reticent to have a hard date without having updated numbers two years from now, which we can't have. And so I just want, I just hope my, my concerns are clear, and I hope that, that with this discussion, in the outreach process, and also in working with the county, that that message is at least sent, that there's going to be a sunset at some point, and that we'll take the recommendation of staff, up-to-date data analysis, feedback from the businesses, feedback from the consumers, and feedback from other interested groups at that time as to when the appropriate sunset date would be. But I just, I wanted to certainly make that part of the public dialogue today, so that there's at least a general understanding that at some point, we want these products out of our waste stream altogether, and that with the more competitive costs, and with the need and desire to get rid of the administrative costs from our side, from the city side, that I think it'll be a good goal to have. Thanks.
If I could offer one thing, Councilmember Macora. Sure. Nap Fukuda, Deputy Director of Environmental Services. One additional thing that our staff is proposing to do over the next two years, which times very well with your suggestion and Councilmember Liccardo's suggestion, is, as part of our outreach, we're going to be providing pricing updates every six months or so. So we'll have a consultant and staff researching all the brick-and-mortar facilities, websites, to have that pricing out there, so the restaurant owners know what's out there, what their options are, so they can choose, best choose, and be best knowledgeable of what the prices are. So hopefully, over that time, I mean, our, our trend suggests that those prices will continue to drive down. So assuming that this six-month period or stretch, we will see that track trending down, and at some point, perhaps in the two years, as you say, those costs will be pretty competitive, if not same or less. And if you recall in the ordinance, we have this $300,000 threshold, but that applies if there is no alternative cost that is equal or lesser price. Right now, some products are more, some are less. So our hope is to encourage these businesses to, if there's a cheaper alternative, to use that alternative. But if there's not, they're more than welcome to use that as well, too, until...
Thank you so much for that information. And as that information is provided to the retailers every six months, if you can also, I think, provide it to the city council through an information memo, so we're also kept up to date as to the trending costs, that would be appreciated. And then finally, I also appreciate the fact that there's going to be, and there's still a lot of this material that comes into our waste stream through packaging material, is something that I've certainly been concerned about for a number of years. And, you know, and I want to, there are some, like, for example, every year I've been doing the polystyrene recycling event with Dart Container Company, and we get a lot of packaging material through those events, and people do wonder what they can do about it. Thankfully, we have enough informed, educated, concerned residents that a lot of them kind of keep it and store it until they can find a way to get rid of it. And so continued efforts and work to find opportunities to dispose of packaging material that is non-soiled, which, you know, most packaging material that we get is not when we, at those recycling events. And, and so maybe suggestions from your department, Kerry, as to, and some of these suggestions have been made before, you know, drop-off site in each council district, what have you, and continuing to work with our recyclers. I know that there are, there is machinery that's available, although it's very expensive, but my understanding is that Dart or some other, potentially some other manufacturers are willing to offer some of these, some of this machinery. At the same time, I don't know if the recyclers are, have the labor or resources to be able to handle it, but that's a discussion I think we need to have, because getting rid of foodware is only one part of the puzzle. There's a huge piece of it, which, especially being here in Silicon Valley, our residents buy a lot of electronics and what have you, that have a lot of packaging materials. Unfortunately, a lot of it is EPS, and so that's going to be an ongoing discussion that I hope is an outflow of what's happening through this process, and that the discussion continues, even if we put forward a phased-in ban today. Thank you.
Councilmember Liccardo, do you have something else on your motion?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, thank you, with regard to the motion that it would move the memorandum co-authored by Councilmember Rose Herrera, the mayor and myself, dated August 23rd. I don't believe that substantially changes the motion.
Okay, along with the other, the changes?
Correct.
You've just discussed. Okay, Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been, it seems like we've been at this one for a while, really look, taking a look at polystyrene, and I, there's a lot of people that, that should be thanked, including Councilmember Liccardo and my other colleagues, Councilmember Cora, and those who have been steadfastly supporting this. I was initially, I think, somewhat reluctant, only because I'm concerned about the small businesses that get impacted every time we make decisions like this. And so I'm really happy that we've got this phased in, and that we've been outreach to those businesses. And I know in my own community, we've been talking to the restaurants, which are primarily the ones that are being impacted. And they're very interested in looking at what alternative packaging there will be coming up. And I think the idea of this is being, as we are leading this effort, we're going to create the opportunity for the new kind of packaging to come down in price. That's the whole idea, is, you know, we get more folks joining in in this process, and we become the leaders. And what's great, too, is other cities are ready to follow us. And that's another concern of mine. I don't like us to be the lone ones jumping off the high dive. I want to see a bunch of people joining with us. And we are, I really thank staff a lot for teeing this up with a lot of the other cities around us, and they're ready to go. I think Sunnyvale, Mountainview, the county's already moving forward. There's a whole list of cities in our memo that talk about moving forward, so that's another great thing that we're moving forward. But I, I have really come to the point where I believe our leadership position is really important, too. It's not just about avoiding the negatives for small businesses. It's embracing this change and what this means in the good for our community and for our environment. And it's not just getting it out of the waste stream, it's getting it out of the food stream. I'm concerned that when people eat packaging with this polystyrene, that they're ingesting some of it. If they, if they put it in the microwave, that's certainly really bad practice. I don't think anybody recommends that. But you know, some people do. And, and so we've got people using this in a variety of ways, and we know it's not really healthy for us. And so I'm concerned about, about that aspect as well. I also support Councilmember Cora's concern about the larger packaging that's out there, and those efforts to recycle it, and I'm sure we'll be dealing with that onward. But I think this part of it, dealing with our health and dealing with restaurants and this type of packaging, I think it's an important step forward. And I do have faith in, in our, in our community and in our private sector, that we're going to come up with lots of different kinds of alternative packaging, and as we all embrace this change, the costs will come down, and it will create even more opportunities. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm very supportive of this. And again, I want to thank lots of people, including the environmental organizations that continually keep us informed and going in that direction, including Save the Bay, Save Our Shores, Clean Water Action, and there's probably many more. So, thank you, and I hope my colleagues will, will join us in supporting this step forward for our residents, for the environment, and for the health of all of us.
Councilwoman Kamis.
Yeah, I, I too am concerned about the litter and, and things going on in our streams. But I, but I'm afraid that we're, we're becoming a city of ban everything. You know, I've, we've banned plastic bags, we've banned, we're trying to ban menthol cigarettes, we're trying to ban, we're going to be banning styrofoam here, we're going to be banning whole milk and sodas soon, and, you know, we're going to become Ban Jose instead of San Jose. And I'm, I'm just, I'm not a big, a big ban everything kind of person. I love, I love to look for solutions on how to clean our, our streams in a creative ways. I know that polystyrene is recyclable, and other cities do use it, including Roseville. I, I would like to see, like, exactly what people said here, the large packaging stills not going to go away. I mean, we're going to have these little popcorn things, and, you know, things that come on your televisions that will not be picked up. And I think this actually will, will hinder the movement to increase recycling. I would love for us to see ways that we can actually recycle this material instead of trying to ban, ban it. I also think that doesn't actually address the litter problem. People will still throw things in our rivers and streams. This is not to say that polystyrene is a, is a great, I mean, I agree that this is probably not the best thing to have in our streams, that we do have a lot of other things. I actually go on events where we actually clean our streams and things like that, and I think that we need to prevent it. We need to give people tickets for throwing things in our stream. I'd love to see one ticket be issued for, for polluting our streams. I'd love to see somebody get caught and then receive a ticket for, for their, for their pollution. That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to, again, and I think, I don't know, did, when you, when you met with all these businesses, were they in favor of it? I know that you said you met with the restaurant groups, and what was their reaction?
Certainly, there's a wide array of thoughts on the topic. Some restaurants were initially very against not being able to use EPS. As we continued to talk to them about their many packaging options, some moved to agree that it was doable. Others continue to believe that it will cost them significantly. So there, you know, there's, there's both camps, but we have seen businesses, like Lee Sandwiches, make changes to packaging a sandwich in an EPS clamshell, to wrapping the sandwich in paper, and reducing their overall costs, which increases their profitability. There are other firms that are nervous about how they're going to, to package soup to go. And certainly, those, those might be ripe for a unique packaging exemption. So, or those company, those restaurants that would be nervous about that would most likely fall into the financial hardship exemption category. So there's, there's a lot of different thoughts on the topic. Our general impression is, as we continue to engage the... Our general impression is, as we continue to engage the restaurant community and continue to talk to them about their many options, that will help them adjust. And some may wind up passing the extra two to three cents is our estimate. They may pass that extra packaging cost on to the customer.
Well, that's, I mean, that's okay. I just, and I appreciate the fact that you've done the outreach, and I appreciate the fact that this is going to be phased in. Again, I don't like bans in general, and I think, quite frankly, we've put a lot of burden onto our businesses. Number one, we've, we've, we've raised the minimum wage. Again, we've, we've banned plastic bags. Payroll taxes have gone up because of this. And I think that the city's actually making things more difficult every year for a business to operate in. And I think, you know, here we are begging people to open storefronts, you know, we're, we're offering them all kinds of incentives on, on making it easier to open storefronts. But I just think we just need to get out of the way of business and start thinking in creative ways of, of the recycling process and on the prevention, the prevention of litter, not the banning. I mean, again, people are going to throw straws into the, into the creeks. They're going to throw, you know, all kinds of different things, I think. And I, and again, I think prevention is better than, than all the banning that we can do. And again, I, I appreciate my colleagues' well-intentions here, but I think that this might hinder business. Thank you.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So staff, along those lines, and one of the reasons why I did a supplement, a memo myself was, you know, I think moving at the speed of business should not just be for the HPs and the Ciscos of the world, it should also be for the small businesses. And so one of my concerns with the, with the hardship exemptions from asking around, I've heard that some of the other jurisdictions that have, that have done this, that the process of applying is cumbersome, and there are businesses that don't even want to bother because it's just too hard to achieve. And so I would hope that the maker of the motion, first of all, thank you for adopting some of the provisions in my memo, that your expectations would be that what, what, what we're asking you to do is to have this, this hardship exemption, that it not be hard and cumbersome and a deterrent for folks to apply for it.
And that's our intent as well.
So would the maker of the motion feel comfortable giving further direction to make sure that it's as streamlined as possible and, and easy for, for businesses to use?
I would. But I think, if I'm not mistaken, EST staff has, has indicated that there's going to be a simple one-page application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there something in addition to that, making it a simple one-page application that you see?
No, no, I mean, that, that was the reason why, you know, I, my, my request for the, for the two-year amnesty exemption was going, it would have been similar. You know, you do a one, a one-page application, you know, I'm applying for my, for my amnesty exemption for two years and, and, you know, based on what their income is, you know, you grant it.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And, and then secondly, going back to, again, the second part of my memo, and again, thank you, Councilmember Locardo, for including that. If we don't, just getting back to, if we don't really focus on litter and, and getting every other stakeholder, which is every citizen in this city involved, then what we're doing with polystyrene today, with all due respect, it's a waste of time. It really is. Because we, you know, you're not just finding polystyrene floating around, you're, you're finding chip bags and, you know, everything else you can think of is floating around. And it's just as bad, you know, for, for the environment. It's, and it's, it's unsightly in our neighborhoods. My district seems to have a lot of hot zones, litter hot zones. And, you know, I think that going back to involving everyone, you know, in our community, including school districts and youth organizations, community centers, to start educating folks and using the best advocates kids is one of the best methods, you know. And I think I put it in my memo, that '70s campaign, you know, you ask anyone my age and we all remember, you know, we all remember that. So, so I will be supporting the motion. And, you know, again, thank you for your effort on this.
Councilmember Conson.
Is I had a question for you on the hardship revenue exemption, because I've heard a couple different words bantered about, and they don't always have the same meaning. The $300,000 means what specifically in terms of this?
It's $300,000 in sales.
Okay, so I heard someone say it was a very generous limit. That's $821 a day in sales, which is nothing. And when you have restaurants that have, a good restaurant has a 5% profit margin. A struggling restaurant has about a 2.5% to 3% profit margin. So if you do the math, we're talking about almost no, these are, these are businesses that won't even be able to break even, yet we're talking about increasing their costs. And I don't think that's generous in the least. I mean, $800, $821 a day. And that's assuming that because they're struggling businesses, they're open on the holidays, trying to make every dime they can make. And I just think that's unreasonable. So I, well, I'll just say, I agree with the Ban Jose comment. I, you guys know, you've heard me say this over and over again about all these bans that we have. And I've been out and looked at the creeks, and there's a lot more other garbage than polystyrene in my mind. And I, I know several business owners very well who own restaurants, and they receive little to no contact on outreach. And I think the, the issues with the hot soups are a big issue. There's a lot of, you go to an Italian restaurant that has pastas with sauces, they go right through all those other things. And, you know, I appreciate the staff chart that's online that shows all the costs of all the options. But what I didn't see in there is what the cost of the polystyrene version of the same thing is there, so you could do an apples to oranges. It may not seem like a lot when you see this container is only 20 cents, or some of them were a quarter. But when you're comparing that to something that is seven cents, that's a huge increase. And I think for some of these small businesses that are at or just above this hardship exemption, who are just starting to see some daylight on their sales, this is going to mean the difference of the owner getting any money to put in their pocket or reinvest in their business and not. So I've never been a fan, I'm still not a fan. I don't think the hardship exemption really addresses the hardship. And I, I'm going to vote no. I know that surprised everyone.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you. I wanted to thank staff for all the work that had gone into this. It's been truly extensive with all the outreach meetings and all the, other outreach efforts that's gone into the process. But in particular, I wanted to thank Councilmember Sam Locardo for really just being a true leader in bringing this forward to us and probably, you know, receiving a lot of complaints, you know, for many, many months from some of the small business owners. And they, you know, have a right to do so because obviously this is going to really affect them. One of the things I really appreciate that's being incorporated to the ordinance is obviously the financial hardship exemption. I think that, yes, you know, $300,000, we're not really sure, you know, the importance of that number, but I think it's a good start. I think that, you know, in the next couple of years or so, it'll give us an opportunity to have a little bit more clarity in terms of how this is really going to affect them and whether or not this is the right number. But today's such a great day. I mean, it's really, it's about time that we join seven other cities and agencies that have already banned polystyrene. I think that if we continue to go out there and articulate that San Jose is a leader in the green movement, and we, we find ourselves really having to think about whether we're going to ban polystyrene or not, then we shouldn't call ourselves a leader. And so I, I think that, you know, I'm more than happy to, to vote for this. I think that there's opportunities to really see less litter in the waterways, in the parks, in open space. Yes, we're always going to have litter, we're always going to have bag chips, we're always going to have paper, we're always going to have other things that's going to clog different things. But this is a good start. And, and if we don't start with something, then how, how are we going to know we're going to have a, you know, a clean city and a clean place to live? And so with that, I am more than happy to support the motion and thank you for, to all my colleagues for putting a lot of effort into, into this process. Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera.
I just wanted to say that to those who are saying we, we need to do prevention, I absolutely agree in terms of litter, and we need to, I agree with Councilmember Campos, getting the schools involved and really working on litter. But I see poly, I don't think all pieces of litter are equal in harm to, to the environment or to humans. And polystyrene's a, you know, a big offender, and that's why we're taking aim at it and taking aim at that before some of the other ones. I think, you know, the Mercury News had an article, and, and the quote was McDonald's stopped using plastic foam in 1989 after the Environmental Protection Agency found styrene in 100% of all samples of human fat tissue it researched in 1986. Burger King and Taco Bell have also shifted to paper products. These companies did it for a reason. They're probably worried about liability, finding it in human tissue samples. So again, it is not just the litter on the street or even the waste in the streams. It's the hu, human stream, foods, our food supply. And we have to be concerned about all that. All litter is not equal. Polystyrene is a big offender in a lot of ways. And I'm very proud of us that we're taking the lead. And again, I'm very thankful that we're working with our small businesses because they're not the size of McDonald's, and making these kind of changes is not easy. But I have a lot of faith in those businesses and the process that we're working with, and also our entrepreneurs out there who will come up with new packaging. We're going to see some new packaging come, come about. This ban's not happening today. I mean, we're, we're moving on it today, but it's going to happen over time, and we're going to see other alternative products come forward. So I'm excited about that, and I look forward to, again, us moving forward on this, something good for humans, the environment, and I'm proud to be up here voting for this today.
Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to all involved in the conversation today. It's always good to talk about things other than some of the stuff we've been challenged with over the years. I want to understand, when we passed the plastic ban bag, we were led to believe by the neighboring cities that this thing would be done and they'd all be joining us. But from what I see, some have and some have, some have still extremely lagged. Can you please provide an update on that?
From my recollection, we didn't work as closely with the staff at those neighboring jurisdictions when we moved forward with the bag ban. And this time around, for this particular topic, we've worked much more closely with staff to frame up earlier so that as we've been, been discussing taking action on EPS, they've also been discussing that with their respective city councils. So we, we are more confident that neighboring cities are poised to take this on. Frankly, this is a little bit easier as well.
Okay, thank you for that. And then we passed a green vision a while back, and part of that, we know, was the sort of the top-level goals, and then there would be lots of difficult votes to implement it. Maybe today is an example, maybe other ones have been past examples. And we, you know, other things sort of jump to the top sometimes. But I was under the impression that, you know, we were passing the green vision and staff would be bringing all the recommendations to get there. And I'd like to sort of understand, and this isn't a study session on the green vision, but what's something that staff's going to bring to the council in the next year or two that will attract a level of attention somewhat like this?
I need a little more time to think about that.
Dramatic pause, you know?
I mean, there's a number of items, I don't know which ones would be most directly connected to the green vision.
Let me give you an example. So as much as we've talked about, you know, things in the waste stream and things not dissolving and things being around for a long time in the natural environment, something we would see that'd be in that same vein would be plastic bottles. Does staff have the intention on coming forward to this council, if anything, banning plastic bottles for water in the near, you know, one to five years?
In the near term, we don't have any additional bans on our environmental services department list. Our preferred approach to addressing with plastic bottles would be to work with the state to increase the CRV so that it moves from a nickel, which it's been at for decades, up to a more meaningful dollar amount so that it is more profitable to be recycled and that folks would retain their containers because they would actually be able to return them for, for that refund.
And this council's taken those stands on the legislative side already?
Periodically, we have.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to address a concern that Pierre Loigie brought up regarding to the neighboring cities, their, their policy on the polystyrene. Sitting on the Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission, I'm very happy and proud to report that San Jose, all of its partners and the commissions are looking at ways to reduce the contamination of the polystyrene. And also, we have also talked about the producer responsibility, manufacturer's responsibility to address the issue that Councilmember Colera and Herrera brought up. So we wanted to limit the use of those peanuts or those packaging, packaging materials at the manufacturing site to reduce the, the contamination of polystyrene in our creeks and, and other locations. I just wanted to applaud the staff's effort in recommending the exemptions and for the business. I think this is, this is very, very important, and I also wanted to commend you on the outreach effort. Thanks, Councilmember Locardo, for incorporating the, the recommendation from Councilmember Campos on the educational part. I just cannot emphasize enough the importance of educating the, our, our residents, not limited to the school children, but the residents in general, or not just, and educating the owners of the small business, again, the, the residents in general. One good example is that when I had a concession, I was selling coffee in a phone cup until a day that a customer, after I poured him a cup, he said, "I'm sorry, I'm not going, I'm not taking this cup because you're not using paper product." And the next day, I switched to the paper product. So, you know, I think that the business will, will evolve with, to, to serve the more educated residents in our city. So I'd definitely be happy to support the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Colera.
Thank you, Mayor. And that, how was the $300,000 arrived upon?
So if you recall, we, in February, we had the economic impact study that was attached to the report. So the consultant tried to identify those types of businesses in that report that they felt would be most susceptible. And they spoke, they looked at profit margins, the proportion of styrofoam used as packaging within their product, everything that I've heard mentions of already. So they looked at that characteristics to figure out what sector of the restaurant industry they believe would be most at risk and most sensitive to any cost adjustment to styrofoam or the alternative costs. And they identified what they would call limited-service restaurants. So those that really had a, you know, no sit-down or very little sit-down, primary service was takeout, so they had more usage. So they looked at that industry, identified further that there's likely single-use sites, less than five employees in general. Then they subsequently looked at, well, what are the other characteristics, the financial characteristics of those industries? And they determined that, using their database as well as working with our Office of Economic Development, looking at their database, determined that in general, those types of restaurants had $265,000 of average sales. So average sales, we look at 265, but understanding there's so, there's variability in that, you know, businesses owners are very creative and they, they adjust to these types of things very well. But, and, and somewhat imperfectness of it. And acknowledging there's other cumulative effects going on, we decided to buffer that up to $300,000. We worked with OED and looked at what, how many businesses that the $300,000 would bring in to the fold, and it appears it's about 321 businesses. in to the fold, and it appears it's about 321 businesses would be, you know, eligible to apply. 321 calculates to about 20% of the second-phase restaurants, excuse me, that would be coming in the second phase. So we felt that was about the right place we wanted to be. It seemed reasonable and that's how we came up to 300,000.
So out of about 2,000 restaurants, 400 are national chains, and so out of the remaining 1,500 to 1,600, it's 321 that actually would qualify under the 300,000 exemption?
Correct.
So it's 20%, or actually even a smaller percentage of the overall restaurant, I mean, 15% or so.
Yeah, 15 or 16, I believe.
Yeah, of the total restaurants of San Jose would qualify for that exemption.
Correct.
Okay. And I think there's some, you know, we've all, difference of opinions, there'd be some, a good discussion, I think a healthy discussion that's been had. And I think a couple of points that have been made, and Councilmember Herrera made the point as well, as to what, it does matter what the substance is because I'm sure that we can, if there's an alternative, look, littering happens, we recognize that, that's why the plastic bag ban was relevant because we realized that that's entering our waste stream, whether we, no matter how much advertising over 20-plus years to try to get people to recycle them, they just weren't doing it. And so we know that there's going to be littering occurring, we're never going to stop our anti-litter programs, our anti-litter education. If we can get some items out of the waste stream, from the litter waste stream, especially something like EPS, that's only going to be beneficial. And yes, there may be an alternative package that is biodegradable that enters in the waste stream in its place. If we had to choose between the two, we'll choose between the biodegradable. It doesn't mean we want it there, but, you know, look, at the end of the day, these are, just like the plastic bag ban, with plastic bags, the plastic bags never came to us for free. We were paying for them one way or the other. We were paying for them either because of the increased costs that was passed off from the grocery store, we were paying for them through the damage to the environment, we were paying for them through the difficulty of recycling and the damage caused by recycling machinery. The same thing with this material, we're paying for it one way or the other, whether we like it or not. Ultimately, if we talk about the long-term effect, it's our children, grandchildren, they're the ones that pay for this. If we don't take steps now to curtail the use of these types of materials. And so each time we do something like this, it seems like it's a small move or it may have an impact on all, I mean, it really has an impact on all of us because frankly, businesses will pass the cost on to us. But it's a small cost in the long term for all of us as a community, as a city, and ultimately, hopefully as a state, to take on responsibility for the long-term impacts of some of these materials. And so I would hope that we would look at some of these issues in terms of a long-term impact on future generations. And I'm thankful that children growing up here in this city now will not know what it's like to go into a Safeway or a Target or a Macy's and get a plastic bag. That's a good thing. And I'm hopeful that very soon they will not know what it's like to get a styrofoam, get their take-out in a styrofoam container as well, and that's a good thing.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to continue on with what Councilmember Colra was mentioning earlier in his first remarks regarding the packaging materials for polystyrene, because part of the education plan, and it's actually even within our own, our own city requirements, is that fact is, you know, cell phones are going to continue to come in these types of packaging materials, televisions, et cetera, the packaging popcorn and, you know, and so forth. And the fact is, most people probably don't store them to try to figure out a way to get rid of them. They're putting them in their recycling bin, they're getting contaminated, and they're winding up in our landfills. So if, again, if we don't take that serious and come up with a better plan to, whether it's another container where we separate them at the curb and have them, you know, taken to the, you know, where the landfill is, and I know there's one of, I think Newby Island has a recycling or a machine that compresses them, you know, then we're not, again, we're not, we're not dealing with the problem, we're just sort of taking the easy or the inexpensive way out and, you know, let it go to the landfill. And I don't think that's our intent. So I would also like to see staff tackle that because that's where most of the polystyrene comes from. It's not from food materials, it's from that type of materials. And again, you know, I've got my small businesses in my community saying, well, you know, we don't even produce, you know, most of that type of product. Most of that type of product ends up in the landfill in these other ways that I just described. And how do you argue that? You don't, you can't. So it's my bit. Thank you.
I'm going to take the public testimony at this time. Please come down when I call your name so you're close to the microphone. Allison Chan, Samantha Meyer, Andrea Ventura.
I actually have enjoyed my time in City Hall, so, anyway. What I want to mainly do today is thank all of you. Thank you especially to Councilmember Lucado for being a strong supporter of this policy for not only San Jose, but for facilitating the inclusion of other Santa Clara County cities to make this a truly regional effort. Thanks to staff for creating a body of knowledge on every aspect of this issue that will benefit your neighboring cities and other Bay Area municipalities that will soon move forward with passing EPS bans. So this has really taken the information out there up several notches and will make this much easier for other jurisdictions going forward. Thank you again to staff for being yet again a model on outreach. In-person meetings with 1,100 restaurants blows my mind and it's definitely a model. The passage and implementation of this ordinance will be a huge win for an extremely valuable local resource, the bay and its watersheds. So thanks for your leadership and let's vote. Thank you.
Samantha Meyer, Andrea Ventura, Kevin Cotilla.
Hello, I'm Samantha Meyer. I work for Clean Water Action. We're an environmental nonprofit and I'm here today on behalf of our 55,000 members in California, about 2,000 of which are in San Jose, to urge you to support this ordinance. As I'm sure you know, this is an environmental bad actor. I was reminded of this this morning on my way over here. I was waiting for the bus and there was actually a foam cup that was underneath the bus that was just blowing around. And I tried to pick it up, but it was moving so quickly despite there being a very light breeze that I just couldn't get my hands on it. So it is a big problem, it's a big problem for our environment. Councilmember Herrera, I really appreciated your comments about styrene. As you may or may not know, styrene is, it's reasonably anticipated by the federal government to be a human carcinogen. And especially in the presence of fatty or acidic or hot foods, it tends to leach into food products, which is a big concern. So I think we also really need to look at this from the human health perspective as well. Just, I know there's been a lot of talk about the impact of businesses today. Going back to the staff report, it does say that, which is like this is the most conservative situation, that it really will have a small impact on businesses and there won't be, no businesses will be going out of businesses as a result of this. We actually did our own cost comparison to try to look, I work in my position with a lot of various restaurants, a lot of small restaurants, and we looked at the vendors that they're working with, a cost, we did a cost comparison and found that on average there's just a one-cent difference between the cheapest foam alternative and the cheapest non-foam alternative. And that's currently, and as Ms. mentioned, prices will likely go down. This ordinance, I think, really does have a generous hardship exemption. There's, a lot of cities have included hardship exemptions when they move forward with this and as far as we know, there have not been any applications for hardship exemptions. In San Francisco, we definitively know that there really weren't any. So anyway, I commend you for taking, for moving forward with this and excited to see how the vote goes today and for San Jose to become a leader in the county. So thank you.
Andrea Ventura, Kevin Cotilla, Rachel Kipper.
Hi, my name is Andrea Ventura and I am a resident of San Jose. And I came to, today to actually commend the council for taking on this important issue. It's very important, I believe, and it's something that I want to, I hope to see pass today. May I approach just to share some pictures that I've taken?
If you have pictures to share, hand them to the clerk.
These are pictures that I take, because every single day I walk either through or around some of the parks in my neighborhood, I walk my dog. And these are just shots of polystyrene that is not in the trash bin and a lot of it's sitting right by storm drains, blowing out of the parks at the end of the day. And I would truly argue with anyone who says, "Oh, we have a trash problem anyway and this isn't going to make a difference" because what's blowing, it's not always that people aren't throwing their trash away appropriately, what's happening is that this stuff is blowing out. I've actually gotten hit with it. I don't get hit with the other kinds of trash that's out there. So yes, we want to deal with trash in general. I get frustrated when people don't pick up after themselves, but it is a bad actor that we're concerned about. But after listening to the conversation today, I wanted to respond to some of the concerns about the economics. You know, we're all struggling. This is an expensive part of the world to live in, this, our economy is poor and we all want to see businesses thrive. We, you know, I struggle to make my rent and to live here. And what I hear a lot of is, first of all, with all due respect, an argument that this is going to put small businesses out of business when, as the previous speaker just said, the evidence is so strong that that's not the case, that we're not talking about big price differentials and that these waivers in other cities are not being requested by businesses. They're not all going out of business.
Sorry, your time is up. Our next speaker is Kevin Cotilla, then Rachel Kipper and Laura Casa.
Good afternoon and thank you for, and I want to thank Mayor Reed and this council for allowing me to speak to you today. I wish to speak to you actually about, against banning the, again, I'm against banning the styrofoam because I am in agreement with Councilmember Conis. I do not, I am tired of this council making these stupid things that go and they, all they do is they drive businesses out of the city. And I will give you an example. When you put that plastic bag ban through, the people did not, did not support it. I, for one, was offended by it and I have stopped doing a lot of business here in San, of my shopping here in San Jose and will not shop in San Jose and go to another city to do my shopping because of your plastic bag ban. That's all it does, is drive people away. And also, there is really no need for this plastic, for the styrofoam container ban at this time because what we need is education. We need to educate the people about it, about the styrofoam. Because it would just be, all of banning would, or whatever would do is, it would just be, put a hardship on the people and on the businesses.
Sorry, your time is up. Our next speech, our next, your time is up.
And I'm just encouraging you not to vote no. I'm encouraging you to vote no.
Your time is up, sir. Our next speaker is Rachel Kipper, Laura Casa, Brad Hunt.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Rachel Kipper. I'm the program manager at Save Our Shores. I want to start off by saying thank you for letting me come back to your council chambers. I know last time I was here, I made quite the mess and I already have again. I feel personally responsible for cleaning up that mess. At my job at Save Our Shores, I coordinate cleanups. I can see the environmental costs, the visible costs and the hidden costs of styrofoam in our environment. I know we've been talking a lot about costs today, cost to small businesses, cost of alternatives. That's the beauty of the ban, right? We're all moving forward together to a more sustainable future that can't happen soon enough. So please keep me out of your oceans, out of your creeks and also out of your council chamber and move forward with this ban. Thank you so much.
Laura Casa, Brad Hunt, Ross Señorino.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come here and speak today and thank you for your leadership, particularly Councilmember Lucado and all of you for sticking with this issue for the past couple of years. As you know, litter is a problem. It's costly to the city and it's unsightly and that's why you're moving forward with this. Not because you want to be a city that bans everything, but I believe you want to make San Jose a better city and this will do it. I agree with Councilmember Campos saying that it's not just about banning one material and certainly at Save Our Shores, we remove the trash from the beach, we educate the next generation, but we also try to stop it at the source. We've actually reduced litter 75% since we banned the styrofoam in Santa Cruz County. I believe we can do the same here. I just brought a couple of quotes from businesses that have already had the ban in effect in Salinas. Some of them say they have found the quality of the eco-goods to actually be good, if not better. They're more sturdy, they don't fall apart. Another restaurant owner said they found a great distributor right here in San Jose that is inexpensive and has excellent selection. Another one has said it's been very easy to transition and another said she actually saves money using the non-foam products. I also want to encourage you to move forward because after I was here in February, I went back to New York City where I'm from and spoke to Mayor Bloomberg's staff. They, as you probably know, want to move forward with the foam ban. They are watching what's happening here today. I've been communicating with them very recently. They hope you'll move forward, it will certainly help them move forward. And finally, we're happy to help. Whatever's worked for us in Santa Cruz and Monterey, we have a restaurant owner that came here in February, she said, "I've tried every material. I serve hot soup at my restaurant." I'm happy to share those contacts with restaurants owners here. So thank you so much again for your leadership. I encourage you to move forward today on this ban. Thank you.
Brad Hunt, Ross Señorino, Diane Fisher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you to staff and the council for moving this ordinance forward. I'm here representing the Central Coast Sanctuary Alliance, which is a group of 100 nonprofits and businesses working to prevent single-use and harmful products such as EPS foam from polluting the marine environment and local California waterways. I'm also a San Jose resident and I frequently use the trails along the Guadalupe River and the Los Gatos Creek Trail and it's disheartening to see foam floating in these waterways and wildlife feeding on the small pieces that are there. I'm here to urge you to adopt the resolution and approve the EPS food serviceware ordinance. I stress food serviceware because that's what we're talking about today. It's been brought up a lot about recycling of packaging materials and I think that is a very good thing to do as well, but we need to have an education campaign about that. We're not, and not discuss that really here today since that's a separate issue. That education campaign would be great because I see lots of those materials in the garbage and not in the recycling where they actually should be. I might be thinking a little bit ahead here, but it would be great to, and I want to encourage you, to consider including retail establishments in an amendment in the future, as Santa Cruz County has done. And to reassure Councilmember Oliverio, we are going to be working with the other cities to ensure that those bans do go through in Campbell, Los Gatos and in those areas. Thank you.
Ross Señorino, Diane Fisher, San Lanzu, Jane.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it wasn't too long ago we were fighting about catalytic converters. The air in San Jose, they had a whiskey thing in there, you could see yellow, the air was so bad and we put in catalytic converters. At that time, even schoolchildren couldn't go and play in recess in the schoolyard because the air was polluted with this, until we put in the catalytic converters. And the automobile industry and people were saying, "Oh, that's going to go down, their sales are going to go down and everything." Industries learn how to adjust on things. And yes, I am for doing away with styrofoam containers here in this city. And other cities, eventually, they're all going to come along, businesses will adjust, they do adjust. They adjust it to the minimum wage and they'll adjust it, and they adjust it to the plastic bags, they will adjust to other things that we have to do in order to, in order to protect our environment. We only have one environment, that's all there is to. We only have one source of water in this country. We have to learn how to take care of it. We have to learn how to take care of the environment in the oceans where the fish, the wildlife there chew up all this styrofoam and they go, and they go crazy. There's just, they just get sick and everything and it hurts the environment even in the middle of the ocean. Here, one person, councilperson, is talking about sunset. Another one is talking about storefronts that are open. Another one's talking about how many small businesses there in his, in their district. But nonetheless, they will survive and they'll come around it. Storefronts that are empty, they've been empty, empty for a long time, even before the recession started. And they've been empty and they're going to stay empty until business improves. It has nothing to do with the styrofoam, perhaps that is part of it, but nonetheless...
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all the members of the council for making...
Diane Fisher is our next. Diane Fisher is our next speaker. Sen. Lanzu Jane and then Cheryl Donnelly.
Hi, Diane Fisher, Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Silicon Valley. I was inspired to come share the perspective of the Jewish community today, which sees this as an ethical as well as environmental issue. After listening last night to Michael Bruin, head of the Sierra Club, he was speaking in front of the World Affairs Council and, and he said, "There's good news. People are really ready for change and people are demanding that their communities embrace behavioral changes as well. We are really, really ready for this change." And so, I was inspired for our country, I was inspired for our city to take this kind of leadership at this time. I just want to quote from Pirkei's Vote. It's a collection of Jewish writings on ethics and Rabbi Tarpon is quoted as saying, "You're not responsible for completing the task, but you cannot refrain from moving forward on it." And so, I hope today you take this opportunity to have an ethical stance and an environmental sustainability stance for our community and vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Sen. Lanzu Jane, Cheryl Donnelly, Greg Korekis.
Good afternoon, Mayor Reed and councilmembers. My name is Sedhanchee Jane. I'm a little embarrassed to say that I'm a resident of Santa Clara because we're so far behind San Jose in regards to sustainable practices and regulations. I'm here to voice my support for the phase-out of the expanded polystyrene foodware. As you may know, yesterday, the San Jose Mercury News wrote an editorial in favor of this ban indicating that they can only hope that the ban will spread after San Jose adopts it. A couple of years ago, we took our 10-year-old son to a beach cleanup event and the largest category of litter pieces we collected was small styrofoam pieces. Those cups, they just crush, crumble into little pieces. These single food containers, pieces can be ingested by birds and marine life. Other types of plastic litter like chip bags don't shred. They can easily be collected in litter cleanup campaigns. I'm sure you're aware of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch where in some instances, the number of plastic bag pieces exceeds the number of living organisms. Styrofoam packaging would never be cheaper than alternatives if the environmental pollution externalities were built into the pricing of that packaging. The same applies to greenhouse gas pollution where we're not accounting for the price of global warming. San Jose has done a great job, I applaud the Environmental Services Agency, with the ban on single-use carryout bags. The great research and statistics done by your department has been, has produced statistics that other cities are using. A tenfold reduction in the number of single-use bags that are carried out of stores and an 89% reduction in plastic bags clogging our rivers. Once again, San Jose can take a leadership role when it comes, becomes the largest city in California to ban styrofoam foodware. Other cities are simply waiting for San Jose's lead.
Sorry, your time is up.
In favor of this ban.
Cheryl Donnelly, Greg Korekis, Crystal Katie.
Good afternoon, City Council and City Staff. My name is Cheryl Donnelly and today I'm a member of the public at large. I am a regular participant in creek cleanups in Santa Clara County, including San Tomasquino Creek, Calabasas Creek and Stevens Creek. I am in favor of staff's recommendation because of the challenges that EPS foam litter presents at creek cleanups. And lastly, we have noticed a decline in plastic bag litter in Calabasas Creek downstream of San Jose's Bollinger Road. Thank you.
Greg Korekis, Crystal Katie, David Wall.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm representing today Santa Clara Valley Autobahn Society and my own organization, Urban Wildlife Research Project. You may have heard, we discovered a family of beavers living next to the HP Pavilion and today, while I was down checking up on our family of beavers next to HP, I saw one of these polystyrene containers floating down the creek and it got caught in the Beaver's Dam. And there were also seven other polystyrene items caught in that Beaver's Dam and innumerable amounts of smaller and smaller and smaller to microscopic pieces of this material. I did not see one plastic bag in between Santa Clara and St. John Street. So, to the ban Jose comments earlier, it's a huge generalization. The only item that has been banned in San Jose is the plastic bag. And as a participator of over a dozen creek cleanups per year, that ban has greatly reduced the amount of trash in our creeks. So, ban is, is prevention. We are cutting it off at the source. We're saying, "We do not want this item in our creeks, in our city. There are environmentally friendly ways to substitute."
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Crystal Katie, David Wall, Cynthia Palacio.
Thank you. I'm with the City of Mountain View in Public Works and I want to assure you that the City of Mountain View and other cities in the region are looking at this and waiting for this meeting to happen today. We are on schedule to bring this forward to our city council late this year and go to public hearing in January. I want to commend your San Jose staff because they led the way on this issue and set up a foodware vendor open house that was held in San Jose and in Sunnyvale. In Sunnyvale, we had 26 restaurants show up from the area of Mountain View, Palo Alto, Sunnyvale and other cities. So, there wasn't a big response, but we were there, we were giving them education and pricing. Litter comes from everywhere, not just from humans dropping it, throwing it or inadvertently discarding it. It comes from squirrels and birds taking those styrofoam containers into their, their waterways, their habitats. I can tell you from the experience of Mountain View on the reusable bag ordinance, we did a trash cleanout in March last year before we adopted the ordinance and implemented it in April of this year. And then we did another one at the end of June and the change was remarkable. There were, there were really no store bags in that cleanout. There were a few snack bags, but there were a lot of styrofoam cups and plates and clamshells that were in pieces, making it very difficult for crews to pick up because it's in pieces. So, that's the experience of Mountain View. Thank you.
David Wall, Cynthia Palacio.
Sir, when we look at the picture that is portrayed before us above, the styrene just doesn't get there in the creeks by accident. Property owners for decades have been paying their storm sewer service and use charge and yet, we can go across the street, City Hall, to a storm drain, right across the street. It's unprotected. Trash is getting in there. So, we raised the question because it's been discussed many times before. How is there over 30,000 storm drains in this city and maybe, I've lost track, maybe, let's be generous, 200 of them maybe, 250 out of over 30,000 that are protected? Now, when we see pictures like this, this is disingenuous to the public, when you think of the amount of money that this storm sewer service and use charge has raised, but yet, the main conduit to our creeks is not protected. In addition to, the legislation required to bring pain to people who litter via fines and what have you, has not kept pace with this. Now, I commend you for going forward with this. It is a shame that the CED committee didn't think about maybe using the Integrated Waste Fund to fund a reuse laboratory, like the BioCenter down south in Edenville, to find up for secondary uses for these products. Like, Public Works used to have experimental laboratory. I don't know if they still have it anymore, but that would have been a good way to mitigate the damage to certain sectors of the economy that relies on these products. But if I were to say anything today that comes out of this is a more pronounced effort to protect these storm drains so these pictures don't appear to mislead the public for the actual cause of why this stuff is there. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. We have a motion on the floor, which we've already talked to death, so I don't, I'm not going to say, say anything else about it. I'm just going to ask all those in favor, opposed. I count one, two opposed, Constant and Camus opposed. Motion carries on a 9-2 vote, so the ordinance is approved. Last item on our agenda, open forum. David Wall, Mark Trout.
Sir, I've been investigating the Environmental Innovation Center debacle because it is of interest of mine for over several years. I am not here to, to, to make fun of the council or, or to, to make you feel bad at all, but I, I found out on a budget statement that I've been looking at. It's called a new market tax credit transaction leverage loan. It's from the 2011-2012 actual budget. The amount is $19,609,645. Now, this figure has escaped me until today, which I will have to make other public record requests for information to verify how much money you actually did borrow to sink into this project from the new market tax credit folks. Now, I have yet to see any activity done by the CED committee with reference to recruiting or just asking for a report of the Office of Economic Development, how many clean technology development companies that they have that they could put into this center if it ever does become operational. I think it's reasonable for them to do this since they're getting paid over $50,000 a year just off the Integrated Waste Fund alone and because they came up with this harebrained idea to begin with. So, I think that's fair and reasonable. I do not like the idea of how one city department, such as housing, could expend $3.36 million of redevelopment money, even though it's legitimate, and then sell the property under the guise of transferring it to the Environmental Services Department a few years later for $4.5 million. Now, you know, real estate appraisers are involved. To me, I thought it was a Ponzi scheme at first, but it's more or less a shell game. And I think you really need to look into this, sir, because the money is staggering on how much is there and how much you're going to lose. Thank you.
Now, government has always been, to some degree, corrupt. Even David had to deal with corrupt Joab, but it is God's will that there are righteous men in government. And, you know, so I would hope that you would read the Bible and consider carefully what I have to say because this is the last time I'll be here for a long time. I'm headed back to San Francisco and I prayed a lot about what God would have me say today. And I was listening to John MacArthur on KFAX today and he was talking about suffering and, and how Christians suffer in this world and how Jesus suffered for our sins. And Jesus is coming back to San Jose among the other cities, so it does pertain to this city council. But it all comes down to the fact that Jesus Christ did resurrect from the dead and He appeared to His disciples and that means that there's going to be someday a resurrection, okay? I can't get anyone to agree with me on my end-time Bible scenario and I can't really blame them because I have set several dates for the return of Christ, but I do find November 10th very interesting because it will be, as I mentioned before, I believe, to this city council, 13, 35 days from the start of the new seven-year cycle. And in Daniel, it talks about this blessing in 13, 35 days, which definitely is connected with the seven-year cycle. But it's not a blessing if you're not saved, okay? You have to be saved. You have to be born again. That's why Jesus died for you. He died because you're a sinner and God's angry at you because of your sins and the only way they can be washed away is if you repent and believe on Jesus. He said, "I am the way, the truth and the life and no man comes to the Father but by me."
That concludes the open forum, concludes our meeting. We're adjourned.